No.
I understand.
Billy Prer actually told me that he was on his way to St. Lawrence County.
Oh, yeah.
They went to pull him over by the time he walked up to the car.
Yeah. Figured he'd do that.
Uh.
Could be all wrong.
I understand. No worries. I really only heard just that there was a shooting over the half. Yeah, but he pulled over and they went up to the car.
They pulled him over and parked in the driveway.
I called this here.
See if we're on.
We're on.
Checking.
No, it's Maryland. Somebody from Maryland.
It's Maryland. You're Maryland. Did you look at it?
Yeah.
Give my first. No, it's okay. Do the page and average.
I got it added. No.
No. It's pretty good. Cast the file.
That's what I said.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe I can sure you know. Because your feet so soft.
That's what he said. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we just all thought, yeah, so we need copies.
Somebody gives me the go ahead that we're on. We're streaming.
We are. Have been reasonably priced.
I haven't gotten in yet.
Have moved.
Maryland.
Maryland.
Florida.
You're Maryland. No, of course. See it. We'll be all set.
I know where Ron.
Pinterest, we know where the camera is.
No, this is, this is perfect. So we're good? Yeah. Okay. Like to call the April 28, 2021, town of Alexandria, or be in order, or everybody take stand for the question. Hearing is there, Josh, at 6:15.
Yes.
So we'll wait for 6:15 for that. Motion to approve the minutes. I have two copies of the two different minutes here. One is the March 18 special meeting and the other is the March 24th. And I've been through them both and I'm, I'm fine with them. Anybody else that need a motion? I'll make a motion. Motion by Ron is.
I'll check that.
Taken by Mike. Any further discussion?
Just on the March 24th one, under privilege of the floor, change that man to none.
Oh, okay.
It's just a spelling.
Yep, yep, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Motion to pay the bills. Need a motion to pay the bills? I went through a little bit too nothing around.
Yeah.
Motion by John.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Sandy. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, none. Privilege of the floor. Anybody want to speak? Go ahead.
Let's go. Just a quick statement to read in regards to the undersigned as Dan Peterson. I'm reading the form because he's laid up in bed at the moment. Couldn't make the good time. He titled the questions for tonight's meeting. The court ordered expert D and M is reviewing the town's response to the recent report. They are due to provide an update in July. In the meantime, he said he finds it odd that the town has hired auditors for 2019 and 20 while still in litigation over previous years. The town is a balanced forward accounting style, meaning that this year's beginning fund balance is based on the end of last year and so forth. So basically, if the previous years are wrong, it affects the current years. Why would the town want to spend money until they resolve this issue in regards to the DMN report, which details over half a million dollars change in just the Redwood and Water and Sewer Fund Balance?
To stop you, to stop you right there, we, we hired the two, oh, we only hired an audit for 2019 and we hired that a while ago. I don't know, I start looking back in the minutes, but that was done, I don't know, if it was done four months ago or six months ago.
And Mr. Peterson has a good point, that the audit should go from the previous audit and the study that he's talking about, okay, that whatever they, Booscat, I don't know how you, how you pronounce it, the, the accounting firm?
Oh, you.
Booscat Holstein or whatever, okay?
No, Danabol McKee.
Danabol McKee? Yeah, that's a law firm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Danabol McKee.
Danabol McKee?
Yep.
They went to 1999. We had an audit done in 1999. Skipped over three or four years of audit, of certified audits, okay? Because what you said is exactly right. They should have done the same thing. We are building from a previous audit. They had a couple hundred page report that was predicated on going back to 1999, skipped all the other previous ones. So I just want to agree with his premise, but the people that he wanted to get hired to do this whole thing, you had to talk to them about what they did.
I mean, they had to do, they had to do work.
I'm not here to, I'm not here to deliver that point or make any discussions.
I understand.
I didn't want to read this. I haven't been home for dinner yet. I worked an hour day. I am starved, I need to go home. I'd like to read this if I could. And then if you guys want to make comments, feel free, because obviously anybody that's watching this stream in live.
Yep.
Will hear your answers and how you feel about it.
Yep.
Where we go from there. I just, you know, I'd like to complete it before my blood sugar level drops too far and I pass out and I can't. Okay? Because I'm diabetic, need to eat regularly.
Why don't you go now and come back?
Because this.
No, you're talking about your health. I, I.
Oh, I know, but this.
If you think you're going to pass out right now.
There were several other problems also reported, such as double billing, unlawful transfers and expenditures. These recent audits may be invalid and he feels it'd be a waste of money depending on outcome of the investigation that's currently in process with D and M and you know. He said that he believes it is unlikely that D and M will modify the report until D and M updates the judge and the judge issues a ruling that he thinks the town is facing a huge liability and these audits seem very premature and a potential waste of taxpayers' money. Here are a few quotes from the 2019 comptroller audit, he says, to put things in perspective. He said, "The town officials relied on their inter-fund balance," or no, "inter-fund advances and loans from other districts and funds," which is a quote from their comptroller's audit. "We were presented with no evidence that these advances or loans were approved by the town board as required by law, although the board received monthly budget to," wow, yeah, monthly budget, "to actual reports that showed the overdrawn appropriations that did not make timely budget modifications to address these overages. So as a rule, no expenditure may be made or any liability incurred unless an amount has been appropriated for that particular purpose and is available or is authorized to be borrowed pursuant to local finance law." Basically, the comptroller stating that the board unlawfully made expenditures that were not in the adopted budget or approved. The board failed to, failed to follow a corrective action plan. The town made unlawful transfers that were basically secret because the board failed to publicly fold and approve them. Additionally, the board failed to provide proper oversight and management and this information was directly pulled from the 2019 comptroller's audit. He also stated that these remarks are not about previous boards, although there are board members currently on the board that go back as far as 2012.
Can we make copies of that?
You can have both copies I have here. Jesse's already got one.
Do you want me to make copies first?
Yeah, would you make copies of that?
Thank you. I appreciate the time and you folks a lot to read that.
You're the messenger. That's not a problem. Go get something to eat.
Anybody have any comments in regards to anything they simply want to talk about in relation to that letter?
I'd love to, once I got a copy of it in front of me. I think we'll have time for that later. I didn't understand a word of it. I guess I'm better off.
Me neither.
So we're going to go on?
Well, I don't want to, I just feel I need to say something there. When he made, made reference to unauthorized transfer, you know, for the comptroller saying I'm just guessing here, was that to make, when Redwood Sewer was, obviously went from black to red? Is that, that money kept them in the black? Is that what that, that money, is what he's referring to, that money?
The problem is without seeing what he's.
I don't know what he's talking about. I don't.
Right. But we're talking about a sewer that went in in 1992?
Ninety-two.
Okay.
Yep.
And without knowing exactly what he's talking about, I mean, well, I'll wait till.
Well, I know, I know in 2013, because there were, there were three years in a row, 2013, 14, and 15, I believe, or, or something, there, there was, uh, the town, which is maybe, I'm really happy they did that, did, had a contact with CPA and had a, had a, an audit done, a full fledged audit, not just AOD. And I think is that the first one, they said, there was actually, I remember, I read it, and it was, they, when they, that something compared with sewer, it's getting very close to going from in the blacks to in the red. And they highly recommended that the town look into raising the rates to ensure that there would be funding to, um, to make it stand on its own. And then the very next year, it crossed over from red into black and the town still hadn't done that. So from that point forward, to make up the difference, I think that's what the, what the comptroller referring to is money was taken from the general fund and put into Redwood Sewer to make it solid.
Yeah. And those, and those bills were just paid. There was no board action.
Right.
That we can find record of that approved transfers or approved that to be done. Obviously, this board has done a lot of that in the last few years.
Right.
Every time we've come across that.
I think it was 2018, we raised the rates to make the expenses match the revenues.
Yeah. Don't get me wrong, I was the board member, my first year was 2012, so I was on the board in 2012. I'm, I'm not trying to hide that one bit. And there was, and I think it was, you said, 2014 that it started going in the red.
Right. I think that's, that was the year.
Yeah.
According to the, the audits I've looked at.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, we're going to talk about things that are related to this later on, but one of the things that I caught my eye here is that the town is facing a huge liability and these audits seem premature. Well, I think we're going to show some things tonight to the public that we feel that the plaintiffs and the preholders and some people are facing a huge liability, not so much the town, but that's going to be for our later discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that when a disgruntled citizen, resident decides to take the town into court, things don't stop. No, the town has to move on. And we had audits in 2013 through 2016 done by EFPR. We then decided quite some time ago, and apparently he's not aware of this, to have 2019 and 2020 audited.
These are those four-year audits.
Okay.
That, that we paid thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars a year to have done and they are certified audits. We've been assured of that.
Right. And our accountant has also gone over those stands, certified audits, and you just don't stop. So you periodically do audits, because that same person will probably be criticizing if we haven't done any audits. But for whatever reason, Danabol and McKee started with their audit, 22-year-old audit, 1999. And as our accountant said, which I agree with what was stated in this letter, you start with a previous audit. So this is Mike Wilson. Is it Lisanne or Lisanne?
Yeah.
Anyway, he states here, "In my opinion, the starting point for any audit or financial examination of a town's account should be its most recent audited financial statement." Here, the 2013 through 2016 EFPR reports, which are over there on the table, represent that starting point. I do not understand why the Danabol and McKee reports to the court started with a 22-year-old audit.
One of the things that I'd like to add here is that, since we have been in court and we have been sued, it's all about financial, it's all about Redwood Sewer. We have a bookkeeper that has been here for a few years and we have other people that are here, including myself, that we would like to have what we've been doing for the last few years analyzed and looked at and audited. I understand what Dan is talking about when it talks that he thinks the fund balances are wrong or some beginning figures are wrong. You know, why would you waste the money? Well, I don't agree with wasting, that's wasting money. The reason I don't is because when they do an audit, they check everything that's going on during the current year. They check the revenues that are coming in. They check to make sure that they're being posted to the public account. And the same thing with the expenses. They check that. They check our lake fees. They check all that stuff. And that's what we want to have, make, you know, have them verify that we're doing right. And that's it. What's that?
Basically, he says, well, basically, if the previous years are wrong, he's the only one saying they're wrong.
Yeah.
So we're going to stop everything just because he says it's wrong?
Right.
We're going to prove it right. We hire professionals that come in, audit the books. They said, not a problem. They certified to them. And so now, we had other accountants come in, go back to the previous one, which is 2016. That's a starting point and then they go forward. So we're going to have 2019 and 2020, which will also be certified by the account, by a different accountant. But you just don't, you just don't stop.
I think, I think we'll get to a lot of these things when we get to number 10 and then talk about the, the two reports. Point 16, so we have to open the public hearing. So establish public hearing in connection with amendments to the town of Alexandria Redwood Sewer District, Sewer Use Ordinance, Redwood Sewer District Use Charge Ordinance, allowing outside users to develop rates from charge. So okay. So need a motion to open the public hearing or do?
You just open.
So the public hearing is open for that. Any discussion or any comments or any comments from the public? Jamie, you've been involved in this, you know what's going on. We've got people that are building houses. We've got people that are doing things and they would like to hook into our, to our. Right? So this is what the public hearing, that we have to process, approach a legitimate path to allow them to do that.
Right. This, existing ordinance for Redwood Sewer does not allow outside use. So first, you have to amend the sewer use ordinance to allow outside users. The second public hearing you're going to have is to establish the rate rules outside.
Any comments from the public? Need a call from the public?
We're closing.
Public hearing is closed.
Right. They have to open the other public hearing.
Unless the public hearing is closed. Why, why don't you?
Close the door.
Establish the rate?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll open the second public hearing to establish the user charge.
Correct.
That public hearing is open. Any discussion on that? If there's no discussion on that, we'll close that public hearing. And now?
Now you can vote on the ordinances if you want to. They've already been introduced and seconded.
Yeah.
So if you want to vote on them, you can.
Need a, need a motion to vote on the?
We voted yes.
Are you just calling?
It's just a roll call vote.
Right. If you want to say before use ordinance number one of 2021, amending this Redwood Sewer Use Ordinance, it's already been introduced and seconded, you can call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Okay. Town Supervisor Brent Sweet?
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Sandy Caputo?
Yes.
Board Member John Stein?
Yes.
Board Member Mike Sayah?
Yes.
Board Member Ron Thompson?
Yes.
Now we'll go to the second, uh, public hearing, second roll call.
The second ordinance, which establishes the rate.
The rate.
It's already been introduced and seconded. You can call for a roll call vote.
Roll call vote for that.
Town Supervisor Brent Sweet?
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Sandy Caputo?
Yes.
Board Member John Stein?
Yes.
Board Member Mike Sayah?
Yes.
And Board Member Ron Thompson?
Yes.
Looking fast, we go on from there. Uh, number one, old Butterfield Lake docks sold and paid for. The gentleman bought the docks, came here and paid for them and the Highway Barn Huts load them out of those trailers and they're gone and were paid for. As everybody can see from the minutes from the last meeting, that was a, did a $5,002 and that's been taken and that's now in our account. New Butterfield Lake docks status, they called me from Route 37, they're getting close to finishing them up and may be as ready as early as next week to deliver. They're going to coordinate that with our highway superintendent and the highway department because they're going to deliver to Butterfield Lake to the ramp and then the highway department is going to be responsible for installing them. So that's where that is. The refund for the foam plating docks, I've been in contact with the man, the company that did that and as of today, we received the refund from the plating of those docks. So that's for all current. Review of the variety of town of Alexandria merch financials. And I think everybody has a copy of those in front of them. Anybody have any questions or comments? If you have a paper copy and these also were all sent to you electronically. Okay. Go on from there. Uh, number five is the Bonadillo Audit Status. They provided us with a, with a draft copy. And I will add, as I'm going to read Michael Lisanne's affidavit later on, but I will add that the draft copy, the figures in the draft copy match up and tie in to the figures of the 2016 EFPR item. And the next item is, we have, everybody's got an engagement letter in front of them for the 2020 audit. Is that, is that something that we want to have done? And we'd like to pass this, uh, through the engagement letter. Accept the engagement letter. The amount not to exceed $14,000.
Do you need a motion? Are you looking for a motion?
Make a motion, Sandy?
I said, are you looking for a motion?
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we accept their, um, engagement.
Motion by Sandy? Seconded by Ron?
Yep.
Any discussion?
This, this whole concept, I, I, I'm certain, on some levels, I, I agree with Dan, you know, it'd be nice not to spend this kind of money. I don't know if it's something we want to consider, like every other year doing this. I think this would be, is, you know, keep us from running off the rails. It's a really good idea to have. I mean, I'm very, very happy that the board back in 2012 probably did, had their audit for 2013, as it turns out, that was a really good thing.
Any others discussion?
Just maybe the association of towns has a recommend, I, I agree with what Mike's saying. If there's a periodic instead of every year, or if they say it should be every year, I don't know. But it'd be good to get, get any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, I think the thought had been that since the finances of a town are in direct question in court, um, it's good to be able to assure the court, we hope to be assuring the courts that everything is just fine. If you recall, Mr. Lisanne's report in connection with his study brought forward from 2016 up to 2019, the numbers and his working papers and the working papers of the Bonadillo Group, according to Mr. Lisanne, agreed. So we're quite confident that the final report from Bonadillo will be that 2016 going forward is just fine. So, um, I, I think the thought process was, let's put this to bed and get 2020 done and make sure the court's absolutely familiar, absolutely comfortable with the fact that there are no problems in the town of Alexandria when it comes to its finances. That's the way, my understanding.
Yeah. I think that's kind of why we have talked about the two years.
Going forward, yeah.
I think it's, I don't have a, the big picture, $14,000 of a, what are, what's our town budget? Four million dollars? It's really tiny.
Yeah.
But if we don't have to spend it, it'd be whatever the recommended.
Every two years, every three years. I'm not saying every.
Because it could be criticized the other way.
Right. Right. I think that's a legitimate question asked by association of towns. I think that's a, a big good source.
It doesn't cost anything to ask.
Yeah.
Part of our dues.
I mean, Pinterest, we're making up our CDs. No, come back.
No.
So it's like free money. There we go. Right?
Free money?
No, I'm just saying, for years and years, we were just, that money was just sitting in a.
I know, I know.
And so now we have.
At least it's working now, yeah.
Yeah, so we can say, use it for that.
I, I, so what are we saying?
No.
Ask for votes?
We're just talking.
All those in favor?
I've got a, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Uh, I got a text to read. Something that we've done here with these meetings because of the virtual and the streaming is that as we have gotten texts throughout the meeting, we stop and address them. So I just don't want anybody to think that I'm out of order. Uh, this is a long text.
Well, why are you doing that? I'd like to ask Bob a question. Before we, this COVID business and we do these meetings online and we do this, you know, we, we record this, we save it. How long are we required to keep this? This electronic? I don't know.
You mean the, the recording or the ability to do it?
The official minutes are kept by the town court. Those are what are required to be kept. I'm not aware of any requirement that we keep video recordings of the meeting. I'm just asking. Yeah, I, I'm not aware of it. Because I know we're, we're reaching a point with our existing, uh, storage capacity of not being able to re, keep it, you know, if it's going to bump the order, why not?
Yes.
Well, the only official minutes are those kept by the town court.
Okay, I, I.
Those are kept by. So there's no reason to them.
Okay, so. So I'll read, I'll read this text. This is, this is pretty long and not only that, but we've already answered some of the things in it, but we'll answer them again. This text is from Dan Peterson. The court order, the court order expert D and M is reviewing the town's response to the recent report. They are due to provide an update in July. In the meantime, the town has oddly hired auditors to audit 219 and 220 while still in litigation over previous year's accounting. The town is a balanced forward accounting style, meaning this year's beginning fund balance is based on the end of last year and so forth. So basically, if the previous years are wrong, it affects the current year.
Right, this is, this is, you're reading the letter.
Yeah, yeah.
People already hit, listened to all this. So far, it's verbatim.
That's the letter.
Verbatim.
Okay.
Yeah.
Suppose you got something to milk? I just don't want to get deviled by not reading something.
Well, read, what's the last paragraph? And I'll tell you if the, the whole thing is the same. What's the last two sentences?
Board has, has members that go back in 2012. Board has, has members that go back to 2012.
Exactly.
Exactly, we've already done through it.
We've already gone through it.
Okay.
This is delivered, the guy risked his life to read it to us.
Right.
Furman, uh, Furman read this note and your comment was, D and M skipped years. What years are you claiming they skipped? They ordered every year from 1999 forward. And the spoiler alert, the previous financial statement laws are proven wrong by two accounting firms. Well, we'll, we'll get into that as we go through.
We'll, we'll address the lawsuit later.
Yeah, okay, because we've got a lot of, a lot of exhibits and a lot of things to say about that. So we'll, uh, we'll continue on with this. And we, we're, the Perry property, I don't know.
Well, Norris has condemned the house. And as we did with the Lotton trailer here, six months or so ago, I prepared a resolution, uh, for the cleanup and the demolition of that house, based upon his order. And he is the codes officer, so he's determined that it's uninhabitable.
So I have a question for a condemned house. And that could prove true with this one, and it could prove true with the one in plus. That house was condemned, and now we have people that wanna buy the house and they wanna clean it up. It can be uncondemned? They can go in there and, and fix it up and?
I don't know if that's a word.
And the condemning goes away? Because their purchase of these properties could take into account whether this, this property is condemned or not.
Well, it's condemned for occupancy, so if someone pays you appropriate permits and does the work, it can be recertified for occupancy.
That's the biggest thing, that was the question I had today from one of the people that wants to buy the property.
Right.
They wanna make sure that because it's condemned, doesn't mean it has to be torn down. So, it obviously doesn't, it has to be, get the proper permit process and be put back into.
Can we just sell it though? Wouldn't that put out the bit?
We don't own it. And I, and we're not gonna get into it now, because it's, it's what's gonna be handled amongst the. The Norris, the people have, have finished cleaning up, and they're gonna transfer the house, and the new owner needs, said he'd like 30 days to finish cleaning it completely. I said that I would talk to the board about that, and talk to all of us, but this is the house in plus.
What town's the issue, talking about the one in plus's or out of?
Plus's, plus's. So, they've worked out a deal, the current owner and this new owner, they've worked out a deal, they're gonna, the guy's gonna buy the house and the property, and he would like, because the order that you put on him, the violation had a date on it of when.
Twenty-six, wasn't it?
Yeah, so he would like, he would like 30 days from the day that he closes on it, which he said should be in the next week. This is, he's gonna go right through it, the, the family's gonna move in and it's.
This is the Route 12 house, isn't it?
No.
No, you're talking about plus's, he skipped.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd say we give the guy 30 days.
That's, that's not a board decision, that's his decision.
Okay. Well, that'll be up to you, and you, and you don't have to make that decision, and I, and I don't want you to.
You have a buyer, and they fix it up, you know?
And I don't want you to make that decision based on what I'm saying, you need to talk to the owner.
Removalation thing. And I'm sure I'd have to get the tony out there before they can have us, because they're gonna have to have a seal.
Yep.
Okay?
No.
And I would, I'm sure I'd have to have a tony, you know, to give them a seal.
Yep, okay.
And it would be the same with the outer street one, if somebody came forward and wanted, you know?
Well, this, this has got this 30-day thing, I guess, and I'm assuming it's 30 days from tonight, right?
That's up to us. I, I, no, I'm sorry, that's up to him.
No, well, it says.
We're on this one?
No.
You're talking about the Perry house? And, and you, you are authorizing you to sign a letter directing them to clean it up or else.
Right, yeah.
Well, this says that.
That's all that resolution does.
It says, it says it must be demolished or removed within 30 days of the service of, of this, basically.
No, of the letter that he's gonna sign, that we're all, but it's right here. And, and because we can't seem to get hold of anybody, we're gonna have to post it on the property.
And that says, and that completely went 60 days thereafter, basically, if they don't do it then, then we, we can't, and I say that we would, but we can't directly be tore down.
You can hire a contractor to tear it down, and you can charge that to the property as a tax. That's what the resolution does. That's pursuant to your local law, dealing with junk properties.
Okay. We can also choose not to tear it down, and hire somebody to go in there and clean it up and make it within our codes.
No, I don't think that.
I, I'm just, well, here's the, here's the issue.
We can't, we can't clean it up.
I'm, I'm trying to move away from tearing it down, because we have people that wanna buy this thing, not tear it down.
What you're referring to is, we're gonna, at public expense, improve somebody's house so it's no longer bad. No, you can't spend public money like that.
It's not public.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna. We're talking plus's and, and outer street here. I think we're confusing the two.
Why don't we start on the plus's one, then we'll.
Yeah.
I think we're done, that's Norris's decision, and he knows what he's gotta do.
Okay.
Okay.
That's Norris.
Now you got outer street.
Yep.
And this just says, the town board is considering whether to order the demolition.
Right, he has a right to a hearing before the board, before you decide to do it, that's correct.
Right, it's not a dumb deal.
Not a dumb deal. The second page says 30 days from the notice.
And I've had, I've had relatives contacting me that are interested in buying that house, and they have an issue. I believe it's with an estate situation, because I think Norris, the owner of that house, has passed away.
So, I don't know about the, this woman. I mean, her name just came up, but I never could find any address for her or anything.
I mean, my thoughts are, we go through this process, it lets us go there and do what we want. And the biggest thing that I, we wanna do right now, is we wanna get that property outside that house and all around that house cleaned up.
True, so this, this at least gets us started, and, and it says considering.
Yep.
It's not committing the town board anything yet.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. Yeah, so we're gonna schedule a hearing in connection with a claimed unsafe and dangerous structure located in the town of Alexandria.
Right, you, you're going to adopt this resolution after your consideration, if you decide to. And part of that says that you're gonna hold a public hearing on May 19. And then at that time, these people are gonna come in and explain to you either why it's, why it shouldn't be demolished. But if they don't show up, or if after you hear all that, you still think it should be, then you can order its demolition.
So, so what are we doing?
Somebody's gotta introduce that resolution and pass, and, and second it, and then vote on it.
Yep, I need a motion to introduce this resolution.
Just a quick question, uh, the 19th, so that'll be a special meeting for that?
No, I'm told that we're moving to the third Wednesday of the month.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Get the board approved of.
Okay.
So, I need a, a motion to introduce this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Sandy. Second by John. Any discussion?
I've got a question.
I'd just like to make it clear that this doesn't mean we're gonna demol, that, you know, we're gonna consider what we're gonna do here. Any other discussion?
What's your question, Norris?
I, I, I've got one question. Do, this is just the house, the junk that's in there in that great big pile. Can that still be cleaned up, say, in the next two weeks?
I would say, no, it can't be in two weeks, we gotta wait till.
We gotta wait till the 19th for that, Bob, that is my question.
Are you asking whether the town has to wait?
Yeah.
Well, see.
Somebody, I, you know, there's this great big pile of junk, I would say a good two, 10 wheelers. And I'm not, I'm pretty sure that's right. Of nothing but junk piled up there, angry.
This is why I asked at the last meeting whether you wanted to proceed under the health officer's jurisdiction, or whether you wanted to proceed under, under the codes officer's jurisdiction. If you wanna clean up something that you think is unsanitary and all that, you're under your health officer jurisdiction. If, if otherwise, you're under your junk law. That's why I asked the question, I was told we're gonna do just like we did for the Lotton trailer, which is what I did. So, if you think it creates a hazard, if, if you think that it needs to be removed because kids can get hurt or whatever, you got two choices. You can put a fence around it all, or you can have it all the way. You can do that. We're talking about taking down somebody's house, so we'll give them a hearing before we do that.
Yep, okay.
Okay?
So, he can tomorrow clean up the outside of the property, because he is declaring it.
He can decide whether he wants to put a fence around it so that the kids can't get at it, or he can order the stuff removed.
I mean, this is just my thoughts, the biggest thing here is that this is on Route 12 on the way into the Village of Alexandria Bay, and it, it's really, you know, unsightly, extremely, and we need to get it cleaned up right away.
Well, if, if there's nothing else, if, I mean, I've, I've been told, I haven't actually seen this or anything, but, um, people have been adding to it. And if it gets, if it gets completely gone, then you'll be able to tell if people are adding to it. Kinda hard to tell since it's such a pile.
Okay, so I, I, I think we go along.
Got a question back there.
Could somebody help me understand what exactly two properties there are? There's one in plus's, right? Is it the old post office, the little guy?
No.
No, that's not being talked.
One steps back in off the road, this is on yellow Route 3.
The yellow house.
Oh, it's not on 26th, it's on 3. I was hoping you were talking about demolishing the one next to my building.
Okay, are you gonna read this resolution so everybody knows what we're talking about?
I'll give everybody a second to that, and then I'll buy it.
You want to?
Yeah.
All right, here's this resolution. Uh, here, scheduling a hearing in connection with a un, claimed unsafe and dangerous structures located in the town of Alexandria. Whereas the code enforcement officer has taken steps to secure a residential structure located at 45381 Outer Street in the town. Parcel, text parcel number nine point, sorry, 7.09-1-34. And whereas the home and or property has not been occupied by its owners in some time, and has been apparently occupied by vagrants or squatters, resulting in a report by the town zoning officer, Mr. Norris Hanshu, to the effect that the property is deemed unsafe, and he has therefore condemned it for occupancy. And whereas Mr. Hanshu reports, there are young children living nearby, and whereas the property is in such a condition that if it is not voluntarily cleaned and or structure removed, the situation represents a threat to the health and safety of persons nearby. And whereas the owners, Oliver Perry, Larry Netto, and Marion Florence, have failed to respond to numerous attempts to have them removed, remove accumulated rubbish and garbage, and to at the very least adequately secure the structure to prevent access to it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town board of the town of Alexandria in New York as follows. One, the property located at 45381 Outer Street, Alexandria Bay, New York, 13607, text parcel 7.09-1-34, appears to represent a very serious health hazard and therefore may be deemed to be unsafe and dangerous. Two, the town board is considering whether to order the demolition and removal of the structure on or before June 16th, 2021, by the hearing, by the hiring of a contractor or if performed by owners by self-help. Three, pursuant to Alexandria local law number three of 1983, section six, the town supervisor is authorized to survey notice upon the owners via certified mail upon return receipt requested notifying them that a hearing will be held before the town board in relation to the report of the property's dangerous and unsafe conditions. This hearing will be held at the town hall for the town of Alexandria on Wednesday, May 19th, 2021, at 6:15 PM, at which time the owners, or any of them, may one, any.
Any one of them.
Or any one of them may present any evidence they deem advisable in connection with whether the town should order the demolition of the structure and cleaning of the property. Four, notice, the notice to the owners shall contain a description of the premise, a statement of the particulars in which the building is unsafe and dangerous, or an order outlining that. If found to be dangerous or unsafe, the building must be demolished or removed within 30 days of the service of the notice, and then concluded within 60 days thereafter. In further statement, then in the event of neglect or refusal to comply with the ultimate order to demolish and or remove the building, the town board is authorized to provide for its demolition and removal to assess all expenses thereof against the land on which it is located and to institute a special proceedings to collect the cost of demolition, including legal expenses. The notice to be prepared by the town supervisor shall be served by certified mail to the owners at their address in Alexandria Bay, New York, and further by securely affixing a copy of the notice upon the unsafe structure itself. Six, the town supervisor is further directed to file a copy of the notice served in the office of the county clerk of the county of Jefferson, as required by section eight of local law number three of the year 1983. That's the end. Does everybody understand what we wanna do? Okay. We're just letting them know. If they have family members or people that want to take over this house and don't want it tore down, show up next month, tell us what you're gonna do, plead your case, and we'll move on, but the junk has gotta be cleaned up, it's unsafe, end of discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did anybody make the motion and second it?
We did. That was discussion, I read it.
Oh, okay, got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Why are you married?
It's like a roll call.
Oh, do you wanna do roll calls?
There's a roll.
All right.
Yeah.
Roll call, sorry, Jesse. Uh, it's okay, town supervisor Brent Wheat?
Yes.
Deputy supervisor Sandy Cudo?
Yes.
Board member Ron Thompson?
Yes.
Board member John Stein?
Yes.
Board member Mike Sayah?
Yes.
Sandy, I have something I wanna say. Norris condemned that place next to me, and I've lived next to it for 10 ye, well, 11 years. In April, I've been there. And the guy came to the zoning, wanted to buy it, wanted to put $50,000 on it, and they still haven't closed on it. So what's gonna happen now, Norris?
Something's gonna have to be done again.
Yeah, and the doors are open, animals running in, uh, the septic runs out on the ground, there's fuel oil in the tank. That's what I've lived, that's why I've put all the buildings on, Ronnie, you know where I have my building, so I don't have to look at it. But something's gotta be done, 11 years of it.
Can't you call DEC for fuel?
Has it, has it been worn?
If there's hazardous waste.
Well, they will, he lives in Vestal, New York, and, what's his name, Bob?
Oh, yeah, I can't remember.
But anyway, he came and Jim Cranker and I were there at the meeting, because we own property by it. And, uh, he said he wanted to put $50,000 in it. He has hired Newberry's to clean it up, and nothing's happened. And Megan Shelton owns it, and she told me it's her lawyer that keeps stopping the sale of it. So, that's where we are. It's not you, Bob, though.
Certainly not.
Okay. So we're all set with it?
All right.
Okay, so next is the, uh, is the Goose Bay study. Robbie, do you find out anything about that?
I, I did finally talk to somebody, and, um, I've got an email in to Craig Forjeff that evidently is in charge of this, um, ecological restoration program. There is a program that exists, uh, sponsored by the Army Corps of Engineers, that, uh, will fund an evaluation of ecological restoration. I'm not sure yet, because I haven't talked to anybody, on exactly what it does fund and doesn't.
Yep.
Um, but I hope to know more probably before your next meeting.
We need more information.
Yeah, I, I think you wanna understand what your, what your responsibility is. You know, as it says in the letter, uh, they'll fund the first $100,000 of study, and then you're responsible to either get other grants for the 50, your 50% share, or not, not to mention the actual construction of the restoration. So you'd have a financial obligation for that as well. So, I'm not quite sure how this program works. I did, uh, I do have a little bit of experience with this, because we, uh, we had a project many, many years ago in Cape Inte, that they were looking at the same thing, but it never went closed. So, I, I think it's worth looking at, but I think it's also premature maybe to, to.
Okay.
To go forward. And it doesn't appear, you know, this letter actually that he wrote, or I'm not sure who wrote it, um, I, I don't think it's, I think it's meant more as a letter of interest. It certainly doesn't commit you to anything. Uh, and it does say that you, you can stop, uh, stop at any time. I don't know where he got the language for this letter, or if he talked to somebody. Um, I'd be glad to talk to the author of the letter. Who, who was it that wrote this?
Stuart from Goose Bay.
Okay.
I can get this.
Do you have his contact information, and then I can.
Get that for you.
Contact him directly, because it sounds like he had spoken to some, he got through to somebody.
Yeah.
To draft this letter.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, the next one, number 10, Danable McKee, LLP slash Sonneborn report, and the Grossman-Santamore slash Bob Fly report. What we're gonna do here, I'd already been asked by Dan Peterson, I don't know if it was a month ago or two months ago, with the Danable report came out, uh, to discuss it, and we wanted to have another report, uh, on the same information, so that we can discuss both sides of both reports together. And I think we've, we've picked just a few things here that we'll, we'll talk about. Uh, I'll, I'll start with the first one. Uh, this is an affidavit from Mike LaSalle. And basically, the Danable Report, uh, as we've heard from Dan Peterson, states that the figures are wrong, and, and fund balances are wrong, and he has, uh, different reports that he say don't, it doesn't match, and they don't tie up. Um, so, Mike LaSalle's examined that very closely, spent a lot of time, uh, working on this. I think Bob has a copy of the, of the Danable Report. And I'll show you what this report is, just in size. That's the size of the Danable Report, that was done by the court-appointed people. And this next one is the, uh, town of Alexandria's answer to the Danable Report, addressing the items that are in the Danable Report. So you can see, this is the actual report, these are the two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen audited financials. So of the town's report, you see these four audits right here? These four audits are in that report, so that's obviously a big part of the thickness of that report, okay? And we're gonna just talk about, uh, a few things in here. I'll start off, this is a-
Brian, can we, can we set the stage so that not everybody understands what's going on?
Yep.
Um, so we have a taxpayer or a citizen, Dan Peterson, who, him and forty-three-
Freeholders.
Freeholders, stakeholders, whatever they call themselves, signed a petition, and they went to the court, and they asked that they be able, and correct me if I'm phrasing this incorrectly, any of you, but they went to the courts and asked if they could file a lawsuit against us about twenty-two, twenty-three months ago? And because they felt that there was gross negligence in the accounting of the Redwood Water and Sewer Districts. The judge said, yep, you got this many people that are behind you, go ahead. Foil, whatever you wanna foil, get the information that you need, bring it back to me. That was, who was the, um, their attorney, so that everybody gets their names?
Sonnaborn?
Yeah, James Sonnaborn.
So, so his attorney was Sonnaborn, and they had accountants also. So they took twenty-two months and compiled that first report that Mr. Sly just held up there. And it had all kinds of accusations, things that he felt has been done wrong over the last ten years or so.
Since point nine years, since ninety, since ninety-two.
I mean, he went back a very long way.
Can I stop you before you go? I'm confused on something.
Okay.
What's freeholders, or what?
It's just forty-three people that he was able to talk to, and they felt that he was right, and they supported him in this endeavor. And I'd like to point out that eight or nine of the people that are freeholders are not even residents within the Water and Sewer Districts that this is affecting. And I'm not gonna, I, I know each board member, I believe, is gonna, and take a piece of what was brought up, and, and I'm, I'm not, because I haven't been deeply involved, and I will later on just talk about the one and only meeting that I had with Dan that made me step back and say, no, I'm just gonna let the judge decide. So anyways, this twenty-two-month-long process that they took, back in December?
December second of this year, we got-
December second of last year, we got that report. Then, our accountant, Mike LaSalle, and Mr. Sly, and many members on this board who have been here, that have been going through this whole thing, took each individual item and built a case as to why it was wrong. And they went back to the financials where all the audited things were, and came forward. There was a lot of accu- there was accusations about people hooking into the sewer district and not paying, all this stuff, and I think they're gonna touch on that. Um, we were able to come up with our rebuttal within three months. Three months, they had everything there, it took them twenty-two, it took us three to say, no. This is not right. Now, Dan's attorney is asking for another two and a half months. So it's been pushed to July, because now they wanna look at all of our stuff and decide if they want something more. So in July, they'll again come back, and hopefully, hopefully, a week after they come back with whatever they're gonna say, then they will have the hearings where everybody will talk their sides, and then the judge will make a final decision, and this will be done and over with. That's all. I just wanted to set the stage as to where we are, what is going on. Yes, the, the town is being sued over the Redwood Water and Sewer Districts. There is basically forty-four people, the main person that's leading the charge is Dan Peterson. Go ahead.
Oh, wait, I got another question. What, what does it do? Does it put a, a burden on the taxpayers on this? I'd like to know about that.
Bob, would that be a level?
Well, I think I can.
Money-wise?
What the freeholders are asking right now is that, obviously, anything that we have had to spend with Mr. Sly or our turn, our town accountant, we have to pay that. It has to be charged to where the expense is being incurred. It's all the Redwood Water and Sewer Districts. So myself, as a person who has two properties over there, I am very concerned about the amount of fees that are gonna be charged to the two hundred account holders in those districts, 'cause they are gonna pick this up. And what Dan is hoping is that all of the expenses that he has incurred in lawyer's fees and accounting fees will also be charged to the town, which will then also be charged to the Redwood Sewer Districts. So-
And we're lucky to have, um, and I'm not saying what we pay him, I'm saying what they're causing.
If I had to guess, 'cause I've heard numbers from Dan a year ago when I met with him, um, I mean, I think by the time we're done, we're gonna be looking at between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars that's gonna end up getting charged, and unless I'm completely wrong, um, to that, those two districts. And if they think that, that those districts were in hard shapes before, this is gonna, this is going to have people selling their homes in Redwood, in my opinion.
Do you want punitive damages on top of his expenses?
I have a question.
Does he want punitive damages on top of his-
Does he want punitive money besides the expenses it's cost him?
There is a claim, but, I mean, the claim is made, but I don't see that going to be awarded. But, to expand on what you're saying, Redwood Sewer, I don't know about water, if I can say, sewer's already probably at least a hundred thousand dollars in the red, so this just adds to it. And, to make it even worse, is when Dan mentioned that money that the comptroller said, you know, the, was, you know, wasn't appropriated correctly because it was taken from the general fund to address a shortfall in the Redwood Sewer. From everything I've heard, that by the comptroller's office, is that you have, um, say, say that happens on December thirty-first. Well, the fiscal years for towns are calendar years. So you have until December thirty-first to completely make that haul. So, because this is, this only involves districts, not, not the four thousand people of the town of Alexandria. Only like Sandy's saying, like, two hundred customers in a, in one spot. This three hundred, potentially, sounds like three hundred thousand dollars. Legally has to be made up in that year. So their rates, this is gonna be, this is very bad, very bad. I don't, you know, I can't say it any other way.
Is that in, on, on top of however many years' worth of fifteen thousand dollar audits we've already had to do just to battle it, which the collective town pays for?
Those audits are, are the entire town.
Yeah, that's a town audit.
The sewer fund is just one small part. So when, when they pay fourteen, when they charge us fourteen thousand to audit the town, that's just one small component of what their audit is. So the, the audit of the sewer fund doesn't cost fourteen thousand.
But those people are getting a double win.
Yes.
Kind of.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Yep. Yep.
Which is crazy.
Can I address that just a minute?
Yep.
Um, the statute under which this was brought is a provision of the general municipal law that says that if these freeholders are correct, their monies of the town are being unlawfully or correctly expended. Um, after an investigation, if the court finds that they have been, the statute says that the persons who are in office can be held personally responsible for it. That's what it says. Uh, so, that's, that's the first question. Have monies been improperly or correctly expended? And that's, the judge's job is to order a summary investigation, which he's done. Danable and McKee report, is his summary investigation, it was, uh, agreed upon by Mr. Peterson and Danable and McKee to serve as, and the judge agreed to accept Danable and McKee as the court's accountant, okay? So this report is the court's report. The town's report, again, bulk of it's only like the first fifteen pages or so. The rest are copies of these previous audits, because, as Mr. LaSalle notes, that when you start with nineteen ninety-nine, when there's a recent two thousand sixteen audit, you know, that was an improper place to start. So what he did was he attached to his report all of those previous audits, these are these over here. I don't want to go too far down the road about who pays for what, okay?
Okay.
The town's initial goal in this is to ensure that the court is assured that there have been no improper or unlawful or corrupt expenditures of the town. Okay, it's not just a, I mean, they've made the allegations in connection with their sewer districts, uh, that there's some five hundred thousand dollars that the town owes the sewer district, okay? Those are the claims, and I think you're gonna get into that, and I'll shut up now. But, uh, our accountant has said, for many different reasons, he does not believe any of that is true. So the, the goal will be that, the goal will be certainly that the town board's not asked to pay, okay? The question is whether the town's gonna have to pay the debt for the Danable and McKee report. At the end of the day, if the town is successful, the town, qua town, will not have to pay for the Danable and McKee report. That would be Mr. Peterson's and, and the, uh, freeholders' problem and responsibility. As far as who pays for my work, who pays for Mr. LaSalle's work? I, I've heard, the claims we're gonna, that the town wants to make that in assessment against, uh, the sewer district, I don't have an opinion on that right now. Um, I understand that if you put things in cubby holes, that's where you'd like to do it. I don't have an opinion on that right now.
We got an opinion from, uh, Mike LaSalle about that, and he sent us a, a ruling from the comptroller's office that said that it should come out of the sewer district. And that was just an opinion from Mike LaSalle, our accountant.
But, this report that went to the judge that was commissioned as a result of the freeholders becomes the freeholders' responsibility and not the town sewer district, as far as I'm concerned. So the question is, who pays for my work and Mr. LaSalle's work, all right? Um, and, you know, I don't wanna argue with the point.
Yep.
He's the accountant, I'm not, but I don't wanna say that it's, it's both the cost of this and the cost of that. The cost of this shouldn't be borne by the entire sewer district, it should be borne by the freeholders.
I, I agree completely.
The freeholders or the elected officials, depending on which way the law-
Depending on which way it goes, correct.
So, it's one or the other, according to the initial papers. I just wanna make that clear, because I'm getting questions about that on my phone, and I think you explained it completely, and that is that if, if the lawsuit prevails, then the elected officials are responsible, if it doesn't prevail, then the freeholders and the plaintiff are responsible. Am I right?
The, the question is whether, uh, the financial affairs of the town are in order. Yes or no? If they're in order, there should not be any direction that the town pay for this, right? Uh, and they're the ones who signed a contract with Danable and McKee to commission the report. So if you sign the contract, seems to me you're the person that has to pay for that, okay? If the court finds that the Danable and McKee report is correct, and there are all kinds of problems with the town, he can direct the, the town board itself to pay for it, and there is a court case that says, and it's only a court case, that, that says that will rather than, because some of these things go back when people weren't even on the board, right?
Right.
So, uh, it says that the town itself can be held responsible, right? That's what the court case says. The statute doesn't say that.
And just so everybody knows, a lot of the examples that are in this court-ordered report talk about a bunch of years that are not just these current years, where they have issues with things, that go back to, you know, nineteen ninety-two in the beginning. The, the E.D.U. classifications and things that got changed back then.
Right, we'll, we'll talk about that. I just wanted to clear the air on that, I didn't want there to be a misunderstanding on, get so bound up on who's gonna pay that we don't pay attention to what's going on.
Right, yeah. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so, I'm gonna read the, the report from our accountant, who has spent a lot of time going through the court-ordered report, and going through the town's records, uh, and analyzing them, and spoke in depth to the E.F.P.R. firm that audited four years in a row of our financials, thirteen through sixteen, and has also spoken quite a bit to the Bonadilla firm that has a final draft issued, or not a final draft, but, uh, initial draft issued of the two thousand nineteen audit. Michael Salle, even though he's sworn to expose it, says, "I am a certified public accountant in the state of New York. I am an accountant in Grossman-Santa Moore in Syracuse, New York. I prepared the report addressed to Honorable Janus McCluskey on April ninth, and incorporate that document into this affidavit by reference. My work in preparing the report began with a review of independent town-wide financial statement audits inclusive of the Redwood Sewer District, prepared by the E.F.P.R. group CPAs for fiscal years two thousand thirteen through sixteen. I have also viewed documents separately prepared by Bonadilla in anticipation of its town-wide audit for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Based upon my review of the E.F.P.R. Bonadilla group's reports, I prepare pages two through twelve of my report to the corporate representing statement of revenue, expenditures, and changes in fund balance of the town's water and sewer funds for the respective years. I prepare those statements in this accordance with generally accepted accounting principles from the town's books and records and from the E.S.E.R. group, CPA's audited financial statements. In my opinion, the starting point for any audit for financial examination of the town's accounts should be the most recent filed audited financial statements. Here, the two thousand thirteen through sixteen E.F.P.R. reports represent that starting point. I do not understand why Danable and McKee report to the court started with twenty-two-year audit. In my accounting work for the town, I separately performed an agreed-upon procedure report on the water and sewer levies recorded in the town's U.B.-Maxx accounting software, and found no failure to follow through with tax levies by the town. Billings and deposits into the town's pool account were appropriate, and I found no significant issues. I respectfully submit that they, they re-lever the issue, the re-leve issue identified in the Danable and McKee report did not take into account that the fact that the town's billing for services for the third quarter of any calendar year, July first through September thirtieth, the payment is not made by October thirtieth, results in an inability to re-leve those amounts with the Jefferson County Real Company tax office." And what he's saying here is that by October thirtieth, Jesse has to submit the re-levies for the unpaid bills to Jefferson County so that they can go on the January one tax.
Yep.
Well, when you get your bill on October first, and you have thirty days to pay it, which is how our billing software works, you don't, you may not pay your bill till Octo- after October thirtieth. Um, and actually, I said October first, our bills tend to go out the first week in October, so they go out- Our bills tend to go out the first week in October, so they go out like the sixth, the eighth, the ninth. I've seen different cases over the years. So in other words, they're not officially late when Jesse sends a report in. When Jesse sends a report in, she can only send in the re-levees of ones that are officially late, which is officially thirty days past due. So that means that quarter's re-levees do not go to the county. They roll over and they go to the next year. The important part here is that every year, we send four quarters of re-levees to the county, which we do, we just, the four quarters don't include that quarter. So, um, take note, payment for town billing sent at the end of September are due by the end of October. Accordingly, any water or sewer billings remaining unpaid after October thirtieth, together with all the billings for the last quarter of any calendar, cannot be re-leveed by the county until the next year's billing cycle. By way of example, a request for re-levee received after October thirtieth would result in not appearing on the county's tax bills until billing in January of two thousand twenty-two. And when I said October thirtieth, I meant two thousand twenty. So that wouldn't appear on the tax bill till two thousand twenty-two. And that's the cycle that we're talking about. That explains the claim failure to re-levee unpaid billings at the end of the year. Part of the Danable report specifically said that we didn't re-levee those bills that were for that quarter that we're talking about. Okay? That explains the claim failure. My review of the town's re-levee issue is that unpaid water and sewer bills were appropriately re-leveed. In my review of the audited financial reports, including my review of the Bonadillo Group's work and draft financial statement for two thousand nineteen, I do not believe there are any, there have been any corrupt or unlawful expenditures of the monies of the town, either in its general funds or special districts. And that, to the contrary, they reflect good financial stewardship of the town and its districts. As stated in my report, my professional opinion, and there is no necessity to place the town in some form of receivership, and that doing so would hinder the ability of the town to continue its ongoing efforts to employ better accounting and internal practices. Gills from St. Amore has been retained as the town's regular accountants, and I'm looking forward to working with the town going forward. That was the affidavit for Michael Hassan that went with this report that was sent to the, to the county. Somebody else got something they wanna talk about?
Just, uh, to, because he uses some, some very strong language in that, and, and what people can't see is, that's actually a quote from, uh, the Danable and McKee, uh, report. So when Brent just said, uh, quote, he, he says, "I do not believe there have been any, quote, 'corrupt or unlawful expenditures of the monies of the town, either in its general funds or in its special districts,' unquote." And I'll get to that in just a second. And then, "To the contrary, they reflect good financial stewardship of the town and its districts." On the December first, two thousand twenty, uh, letter to the judge from the Danable and McKee report, it states, it states the following, concluding remarks. "The information provided in this preliminary report indicates a historic and systemic failure of the town to follow acceptable accounting practices, historic and continuing failure for adequate and lawful oversight by town officials, historic and current failures to successfully implement auditor's recommendations and corrective action plans, false financial reporting to auditors, the court, the New York State OSC, and unlawful changes to the town's financial books and records based on several indications and repeated evidence of potential fraud. To protect funds and preserve records, we recommend the town be placed in a form of receivership as deemed appropriate, while a complete and comprehensive town-wide audit of all the town's funds is conducted for two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen as a minimum. This audit would be conducted with a focus on specific concerns uncovered in our engagement. A successful audit cannot be conducted while town officials are willing to alter financial records and obstruct in various ways. Given the nature of what has been disclosed in our report, we respectfully request the court's guidance on how to proceed." Our accountant is referring to that last paragraph. Very strong language, potential fraud, intentional obstruction. Our accountant's gone through all of this and found it just to be the opposite. So, and he states in here, "And to the contrary, they reflect good financial stewardship of the town and its districts." So now you have a CPA who's gone through all of the, uh, Danable and McKee report and has come to the exact opposite conclusion. This whole thing started with the fact that over the years, nobody wanted to raise the rate over at Redwood. I get it, you know, and it's, it's, it's a bill nobody wants to pay, but guess what? Every year, costs go up a little. And as John Stein said a long time ago, if they had just increased the rate per EDU by one or two percent a year, we wouldn't have had to increase it by forty percent. So all of a sudden, we had to play catch-up. So we've got this, uh, text that, uh...
Could I, could I interrupt you for a second? It's specifically in there that they request that the town gets audited, should, audited twenty-fourth?
Fourteen through eighteen.
We, we were audited thirteen through sixteen.
Sixteen, right. And so...
Well, then, that's a period of time they're asking that we should be audited, that we were audited.
Already audited.
Okay.
And what, what, we, and it doesn't make sense?
It doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't. Whether Mr., Mr. Peterson had copies of those audits.
Okay.
Whether he intentionally kept them away from them, I don't know. We'll find out.
Okay.
But, but obviously, this gentleman, okay, is reporting on information that is just not, we had thirteen through sixteen. He's thinking we should go fourteen through eighteen.
Okay. I just wanted...
Right.
Our ears pricked up when I heard that.
Right. So anyway, uh, Mr. Farman, before he had to go and get his blood sugar under control, which I hope he's okay right now, uh, read this two-page letter, which was then texted, uh, to the town supervisor. And in here, he takes out what he does often. He takes partial sentences out here and there and leaves other things out. So I'm gonna read his partial sentences. Here are a few quotes from the two thousand nineteen comptroller audit to put things in perspective. Quote, "Town officials rely to interfund advances or loans from other districts and funds," close quote. What happened, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Fayette, the bills for Redwood Sewer got paid. They got paid from nineteen ninety-two all the way to present, they got paid. The amount of money being collected was not sufficient to cover the expenditures. What, what's the fallback? The general fund. So at the end of the year, what happens is, income and expense out of balance, it's supposed to be within twelve months be brought into balance. Those districts are self-supporting. Income is supposed to equal expenses. And town board after town board didn't wanna raise the cost to the citizens over in Redwood that are part of that sewer district. And because of it, the problem just kept getting worse and worse. The problem we're in today was actually caused by previous boards back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, and fourteen deciding this whole mess needed to get cleaned up. And a result of getting it cleaned up was we needed to charge a rate that would take care of current costs and start to chew away at the monies that the town general fund had been forwarding for years. And so instead of just going along like other boards had, leave it alone, leave it alone, kick the can down the road, it was decided to do something about it. And we've been rewarded with about a hundred thousand dollars worth of legal and accounting fees that we've had to spend to defend ourselves. One of the saddest parts of all this whole deal is the lack of civility. And I talked to different people. Social media can be a positive thing, it can be a negative. But when you've got town board members being called swiney, crooks, the FBI is gonna be involved, some of them are gonna go to jail, comments made about different, various people sitting on the board, well, libel statutes unfortunately were considered public figures. So cheap shots like that can be made against sitting officials, and we don't really have a recourse to that. And that's unfortunate. And I say it's unfortunate, not for me, but for somebody else that may decide they'd like to run for town board. And they look at that and they go, wow, gotta be nuts to wanna do that. You try to do your job, do it to the best of your ability, and instead of having discussion based on facts and figures and keeping personalities out of it, it has to be made personal. And that's where this has gone, and that's the saddest part of this whole thing. Besides the entire waste of money and time, it, it's just the lack of civility, and it's just gone downhill completely. So anyway, rely to interfund advances or loans from other districts and funds, that's true. Comptroller said, that's true. And that's because the bills were paid, Redwood Sewer didn't have enough money to pay for it, and the general fund paid it. Says, "We were presented with no evidence that these advances or loans were approved by the town board as required by law." True. And guess what? As number eighteen today is, budget transfers. So what, what did previous boards do? They would let wait till the end of the year. We have been for some time now, when something is out of balance, we do budget transfers, a motion is made, and it's seconded, it's discussed, it's voted on, so it's right there. So did this not happen in the past? I agree. Was there ill intent? No, not at all. Next quote he has here, "Although the board received monthly budget to actual reports that showed the overdrawn appropriations, they did not make timely budget modifications to address the overages," close quote. I've talked to board members from previous boards going back quite some time. They never got financial reports at the meetings. Okay? We do because we insisted on it. And what we have is, we have a report that our accountant has, that our, uh, bookkeeper has, she gives us every month, so we know exactly what's going on. So this is what he's saying. True? Wasn't true in the past, it is true now, and because we get those, we make the budget "As a rule, no expenditure may be made or any liability incurred unless an amount has been appropriated for that particular purpose and is available and is authorized to be borrowed pursuant to the local finance law." Again, true. But what happened was, the bills needed to be paid, they were paid, town board, for whatever reason, didn't do what they should've done, which is every year, they're supposed to, uh, review the expenses and income, divide it by the number of EDUs, an accurate number of the EDUs, and come up with a new rate. That should've been happening every single year. That did not happen. So we are where we are now. And the freeholders, uh, have listened to a person who talks a great game and is perfect at pulling different things out of reports. And we, I believe, Bob, we have asked for the town to be reimbursed by the freeholders.
We have. We've brought the claim for it, but...
Right. I know it's, it, but it's, just, just so people out there know, that we, we're having to expend and defend ourselves for we feel is no good reason at all.
Right.
And, and we're asking, and, and because that's gonna be borne, I mean, we, Bob's paid up-to-date, Mike Hassan has paid up-to-date, we'd like to get that money back because we shouldn't have had to pay it in the first place. But anyway, I'll shut up for a second.
Um, I just gotta read one thing that's, that's been brought up here, and I've got some texts that I've gotta read too. But, uh, one of the things from Mr. Sonnenberg, Dan Peterson's attorney, "The summary of our findings is as follows. The district has not been properly audited since nineteen ninety-nine." Well, as you all know here, how many times have we talked about this? We've got four years of certified audits right there. Why has this district not been properly audited? This is a very reputable firm in New York State, from Buffalo, New York, that did our audits, and they're saying they're not properly audited. Well, they don't tell us why. And, and we've been through it, we've had Mr. Hassan go through it, and he's spent a lot of time talking with the EFPR, and they dug into the, to the numbers, and from everything we know and we see, we were properly audited. So this is just, just one more thing that I wanted to bring up. Um, I'm gonna bring up a little part here about, uh, what they say. The, the initial letter from the, Mr. Sonnenberg, uh, Dan Peterson's lawyer, "The concluding language that there is excess of five hundred thousand dollars that has been misappropriated compels me to ask for a conference with the court. While there are many troubling findings, perhaps the most troubling is the determination that the books and records of the town were altered before they were, were provided to Danable and McKee." Then, it goes on to say, "Mr. Sweet became supervisor in January two thousand eighteen. Sometimes after that date, we believe, they believe, based on our examination, is when the records were altered or created." So that's after I became supervisor. Uh, "The town supervisor is responsible for keeping an accurate and complete account of all monies received and dispersed." And at that point, so we researched the altering of these records. Okay? And I'd just like Mr. Sly to explain to, for a minute of what we found and how we can prove who has been into the records and what they have done.
Okay. Well, uh, based on that allegation that you audited records in two thousand eighteen, Mr. Hassan asked, "Does anybody run an audit trail of the account?" It's a QuickBooks account, you can run, you can run an audit trail and determine who logged on when and what they did. Okay? And so...
And that can't be changed. That's, that's part of the program, that can't be altered, it can't be deleted, nothing can be done to it.
Right. Correct. And so, um, our bookkeeper was asked to run the audit for two thousand eighteen, and the only person, the only entity that signed on was the then-accountant, Sherri Ferguson's office. I mean, this is a six-hundred-page report of sign-ons in two thousand eighteen, and Brent Sweet's name is never there. Further, Brent Sweet never had the password to sign-on, if you know. And Brent has even admitted in an affidavit that he said if he had it, he wouldn't know how to order an account if he, if, if he had the password. So I thought that was a funny line, but...
True, too.
Yeah. What, what, um, Mrs. Ferguson has provided in affidavit form is that the documents that Mr. Peterson is referring to were preliminary or tentative financial statements, they're posted to the internet, you know, posted on the website. They were changed by Ferguson, updating with current information up through the end of each year. They weren't changed or altered, they were updated to be final financial statements. And those statements comport, according to Mrs. Ferguson's affidavit, with the AUDs filed in the respective years, those are, uh, the reports submitted to the state every year. Uh, and so essentially, uh, and it was Mr. Hassan's idea to check this audit trail, the allegation that Mr. Sweet had altered financial statements is fatally false. And anybody's welcome to check through six hundred pages if they'd like, but you, you won't find Brent Sweet's name.
And, and Sherri Ferguson said in an affidavit that she was the only one, her and her son John, that had access to that program through their ID and their password, and nobody else was ever given that ID and that password.
Until you asked that Nicole Millsap be provided with it, and that's why Nicole could access some of herself.
And, and that was in June of two thousand twenty, that we asked, that we have a letter where she did send us that so that Nicole could do some financial adjustments. Yep. Don, you got anything?
Yeah. I've been dragged through the mud with it myself. I'd like to walk through this offer tonight. I was on the town board for, for two, four-year terms from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-five, then again, two, four-year terms starting in two thousand fourteen to present. I did not serve on any town board or committees in nineteen ninety-six through two thousand thirteen. I have a copy of my affidavit presented to the court on this. These are the accusations made against me and Mr. Peterson's lawsuit, summarized in Danable and McKee's cover letter to Honorable Judge James P. McCluskey. Page four, claim that I used my position as town councilman to enable myself and a relative marked amity out to avoid getting hooked up in the sewer system. Page four, I was accused of using my position to allow another relative, Judy Ferguson, who had sewer service on property of, on Route thirty-seven, to have allowed on hook from system, sewer charges canceled. Page six, I was accused of allowing another relative, Kyle Fowler, fellow company, to hook up the new service for both water and sewer, what has been known as the old feed mill, at no cost to Mr. Ferguson. mill, at no cost to Mr. Felder. Fellow's roofing had another new service, fellow's roofing had another new service by a Brian Mulaney on Route 37. The town was accused of not charging them for proper expense and cost the town to hook up their properties in both water and sewer. I have a copy of my affidavit here, but will read it short and version, keep this short and to the point. Regarding the first claim that I and Marge Amiot got special treatment, the reason I and Marge Amiot are not connected to sewer system is because of the original 1991 ordinance. Any properties further than 100 feet are not required to hook into system, section 304. We also provided to the court the 1994 letter from the then-town attorney, Joseph W. Russell, to the town clerk, confirming that only those properties within 100 feet of public sewer were required to connect the sewer. Claim that I used my position to allow Judy Ferguson to unhook from the sewer system. This occurred in 2009, I was not on the board in 2009. The claim that I enabled another relative to get connected new service to both water sewer, Kyle Felder, fellow's roofing at no cost to Mr. Felder. This is a new service began in 2010, I was not on the board at this time. Another provable false claim was that the town did not charge Kyle Felder and the Brian Mulaney for expenses of new connects, thus putting the burden on the redwood sewer district. The town presented affidavits to both Mr. Felder and Mr. Mulaney, showing they both paid for expenses of digging and laying pipe into their property. Copies for both parties of these invoices that the town sent to them for the cost to have the final hookup from sewer pot to their properties. The town provided to the court copies of all invoices and affidavits proving that both Mr. Felder and Mr. Mulaney paid for the cost of this new service to be installed. I might add that in all these claims by Mr. Peterson, not one of them, not one piece of evidence was ever provided. In closing, these accusations are all false, like all the dead birds in the red water tower, and can be proven so with legal documentation. I ask, please get the facts when you hear more negative gossip. Thank you. I had enough, something else, maybe we took half an hour on that, this was on the, who's going to pay what, and let it go.
Yeah, I'm just...
One of, one of the accusations that he also made involved vacant properties. And I don't know if you recall back in 2017 or 18, when we raised the rates, I did, I looked over the whole Redwood Sewer District, I looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance had provision to charge vacant properties a quarter of an EDU. So, we started charging a quarter of EDU from that point forward. What I also did is I took the time to go through many boxes of stuff in the back there, and I came across a letter in 1992, when the, when the Redwood Sewer District first came into, in, online, and the first bills are going out. The first bill was partway through the first quarter of 1992, so it wasn't a complete three months. So it was a, it was a prorated one for that. And, and I, and I just got, made a copy of one of the letters to one of the property owners that, that involved a vacant property. And what, what it, what it was is basically letting this property owner know that the town board had decided, and I think it was in, you know, I think it was April 1992, to stop, even though they just started, to stop charging for vacant properties. So, from 1990, from that point in 1992, all the way to 2018, we didn't charge any, any vacant properties at all. In, in the lawsuit, that's one of the many claims is, we should have charged for that. Well, here we have a thing for the town board, voted on it, one of the things that Mr. Peterson makes note of in his letter that Mr. Farman read, was town, town board didn't, didn't vote on certain things, so here we have an actual document saying that they did, okay? Going forward, even from that, from the 2018, we had a property owner in the Redwood Sewer District that contested us charging vacant properties. Okay? And we kind of went back and forth a little bit, there, there's actually a bunch of lawyers, along with our attorney, and we came to the, you know, we decided, can't really, well, can't really do that, but kind of linked to that, that winter, the three members of the comptroller's office spent a lot of time here, going through our stuff, which had been done several times, and once they got done with that, they, we had a little conference call, and in that conference call, they let us know, that, this is from their legal department, from the comptroller's office, this is Albany, that if you don't receive an actual service, meaning like in this case, like in a sewer district, if you, if you are not actually connected to the sewer line and you're putting stuff into it, you cannot be charged anything. So, it's very interesting...
You're not charged by EDU.
Oh, charged by EDU, I'm sorry. So what's very interesting is, the decision the town board made back in the spring of 1992, unbeknownst to this comptroller's, you know, way of thinking, was actually very proactive. They were, they were ahead of the curve. In 2018, we followed the count, the, the ordinance, which actually was kind of incorrect. So, that's another thing he's trying to say, that, and it kind of looked into this $500,000 is all these fees that should have been, he's claiming should have been collected, right?
Yep. One thing that I want to add to what you're doing is that when we discovered this, and we found all the paperwork back in 1992 or 93, when those EDUs were charged, and when they wrote the letter, and then when they canceled the, they changed their minds and they stopped that deal, we had the paperwork that showed, that was on Town Stationery, of that whole process, and there was six or seven pages, and we called Mr. Peterson to come in, and we sat down with him.
I gave him a call.
Am I right?
Yeah, I gave him a call.
You and I sat down with him, and we showed him all those papers.
Yes.
And it showed where the billing started, it showed where the town passed a resolution and decided to stop the building of the vacant parcels, and they sent a letter, we actually had the letter, that they sent to the property owners, saying that they would no longer be built.
Well, actually...
And I've been accused, and John Stein's been accused of not paying these sewer bills for all these years. Why would you pay a sewer bill, why would you pay, pay anything if you never got built? If we never got built because they took us off the deal?
And amongst all those documents were ledger sheets that actually showed what everybody was paying, including 47 vacant properties.
Yeah.
And it showed, in your case, you two guys having vacant properties there, you paid it, you, the bill for that parcel first quarter, and then from that point forward, the town no longer charged.
And then we got a letter, and they stopped building.
When you didn't get a bill, you paid it.
Well, can I comment on all that? The most important part of all that is the comptroller rule that the town, and no town, can charge someone who's not connected to the sewer system by equivalent dwelling in it. Now, understand, and our engineer will tell you, that all across the North Country, that's how everybody does it. And we just happen to be the first town cop. Okay, they're going to fall like dominos here pretty soon. So, but yet the claim in the underlying report, the underlying report, this one, is that for all these years, they should have collected it. Well, the comptroller said it was illegal, so if it's illegal, it's illegal. None of those charges that they're claiming are valid because the comptroller said they're illegal charges, all right? And what this board did was it went beyond that and it said, "Okay, but this is why I corrected on the issue of billing vacant parcels." The reason we spoke with the comptroller's office is, is that there are ways to build vacant parcels, and, and you can either have an ad lorem tax when you first form your district, and charge everybody who's in the district a tax for the, for, for purposes of paying, oh, capital costs for its construction. You can also, or separately, you can charge for what they call benefit assessment. You don't want to hook up, fine, but you're near the sewer line, you could hook up if you wanted to, so that should increase the value of your property somewhat. Some people just don't want to live on sephics, right? So, you can charge a benefit assessment. But what the comptroller now has told this board is that you cannot do that if it was not in your original ordinance. I don't read the law that way, I challenged them, we asked the comptroller for a formal opinion on the issue, they refused to issue it. So, now what this board has done is it has sought home rule legislation through our state assemblyman and our state senator, seeking home rule legislation that would allow us to now impose, to impose an ad lorem tax or a benefit assessment. And the comptroller's office has said, "If you can get that out of the state legislature, we'll, we'll be fine with it." So this board has gone now and pressed home rule legislation with our state assemblyman and state senator to try to get that adopted. So this board's gone way beyond what one would expect, to be able to bring more money into the Redwood Sewer District, any of our sewer districts. We only have two.
Any special, any special district.
Any special district, thank you, because it would apply to water districts as well. To ensure that those who aren't hooked up still can be charged something to help offset all the costs of the district, as long as they're within the district. So, where the idea comes from that this board hasn't taken steps to try to ensure that money can go in the Redwood Sewer, I don't know where that comes from, at least since I've sat here in the summer of 2017.
Well, to, to kind of go a little bit further, you know, when you talk about bringing in more revenue, all we're looking for is revenues to cover expenses, and, which would include operating costs in, and developing reserve funds and paying off the, the capital cost that has been, you know, there was, it has occurred to, to do this. And this would, this ad lorem, which I personally think is the way to go, would more equitably distribute the cost to every property owner within these districts. Fair enough. Yeah, I just wanted to...
Yep, no, that's fine. And it's also my understanding that the other side of this lawsuit, the other parties, have spoken with our assembly representative and senate representative, and have been an impediment in home rule legislation going forward. So it does seem a little odd that the freeholders have amongst them someone who is making it harder for the town board to come up with a way to share in the cost of the district and to give them at least a little bit of relief financially. So that does seem a little odd.
Yep, that's, that's a good point.
Maybe at the next freeholder meeting, they can bring it up.
The, one of the things I want to say is that we spoke about this, things in 1992, when the town sent out the letter, and the town decided to stop charging the vacant parcels. One of the things that Mr. Peterson claimed is that that was not done properly, or that was not done legally. He must know a lot more about the laws than I know, or that attorney Sly knows, but if it wasn't done properly in 1992 or 1993, whose fault is that? Isn't it anybody's fault that's sitting at this table, is what I'm getting at. And as John said, or Ronnie said, many a time, it was brought about raising these rates, and they said they can't afford it in Redwood, and they didn't. So we went, I don't know if it was 19 years or how many years, that the rates went up very, very little, and that's the reason...
Had it down at all.
You saw the 40% increase.
Rick, can I say something? I've said it before, but I'll say it one more time. They don't want to look at the good that you five have done and what you inherited from the wrong. They just want to somehow just bury all of you, and I think it's ridiculous, because I think you people, and our lawyer too, and we've, we've got a good board that many, many times, I've told many people that. But you've got these ones out there that I believe, from what I'm hearing, they don't know what they're talking about.
Yep.
That's all I'm going to say.
I've got some texts to read, and I apologize for the fact that you've seen me, or the public has seen me texting, but I've gotten a tremendous amount of texts from Dan Peterson. And he wants to make sure that I read every one of them, which I will do, and I told him I will do. I told him I would not interrupt anybody, because he wanted me to do it at that time. But his last one is, is really interesting, because it says, it says, "The 1991 ordinance that you're speaking about with the 100-foot rule, that, that ordinance that was presented is not signed." Well, there we go, there we go again. We got something that was done in 1991, and he's got a copy of it, and it's signed. So in his eyes, that ordinance is invalid, right? Well, I believe we also sent, as an exhibit, a copy of Joe Russell's letter. And Joe Russell's letter, who was the one who created the ordinance, very clearly says, John, doesn't it, that there's a 100-foot rule. So, you know, this is the kind of thing we're dealing with here. There's things that weren't done properly back in 1991, there's things that weren't done properly, all kinds of times. But, we just, we're just trying to get through this thing, we're trying to fix these things, we're trying to get home rule legislation so that everybody can bear the cost in Redwood, and as Ronnie said, provide some relief to the people that have been paying, I guess I'm going to say by themselves, and they think there should be other people involved. So, let me, let me read these texts, so we can move on with this meeting. "The financial statement audit costs around $10,000 or $15,000 for the entire town, with 14 separate, separate funds, which you separate each water and sewer system. That's about $100,000 per fund and accounting fees. CNH spent over $30,000 in 12 months just investigating two funds, the Redwood and Route 12 sewers. How can a $1,000 financial statement audit override a $30,000 engagement that was not able to determine a fund balance for either fund? CNH audit was not related to freeholder's affidavit, the DNM report is not signed by Dan Peterson or any freeholder, but rather a certified accountant. The judge already ruled who would pay for this audit, and it was not the taxpayers. We went through that deal. If the, the audit goes one way, or if the judge goes one way, the freeholders and the plaintiff pay. If it goes the other way, the elected officials pay. I think we made that clear. The town officials are responsible. I'm listening to all your opinions. How about reading the public opinions of the DNM audit, written in their concluding remarks? They will have everyone's opinion out there. I think every one of us who brought up a specific situation here read the D'Anabel and McKee parts, their opinion. And then we read the Mike LaSalle parts. That was something that we talked about, that was very important for this procedure, because we want to give everybody a fair shake here."
Who's text is that from?
It's all from Dan Peterson.
Okay.
It's all Dan Peterson.
He's saying that you guys personally should be responsible?
So $30,000, because you got charged $30,000, that report's better than another report that's less expensive?
Yeah.
Okay. So you agree...
Let me make sure I got that right.
So you agree that you're stating what you want to be heard and not the whole story? If you don't read the DNM opinions, then it's half-truth. Well, I think I'm trying to say here that we're reading the DNM opinions. I mean, we're not reading the 500-page report, but we're reading the select things that we're talking about. DNM saw every audit, this is just conjecture, unfounded. I'm asking you to read my text as appropriate. D'Anabel saw every audit, and I personally gave it to them. They requested the 2016 audit. Don't we have evidence that they got the 2016 audit?
I, I don't have evidence that they got it. I have evidence that Mr. Peterson had it.
Mr. Peterson had it, okay, yep. The premise I held, I mean, many a times when we're going through this process, Mr. Peterson would get ahold of us and email us, and I think Jesse, you might remember this, and say that he was also collecting information for them, was he?
Yeah.
So he was also emailing us, not as D'Anabel, but as Dan Peterson, and asking for certain information. And I believe I sent Dan Peterson certain information, and did you send Dan Peterson certain information? So, in other words, we're dealing with two or three different things here. I'm sending, Jesse's sending, we're sending it to Dan Peterson, we're sending it to D'Anabel McKee, we're sending it to the associate at D'Anabel McKee, Karen, we're sending it to a bunch of different people, okay? "The auditors used the bank records to perform the audit and not the financial statements." So, that, that's very interesting. They wouldn't look at the financial statements, they used the bank records.
I don't know which auditors he's talking to.
Yeah. He's got to be talking about his auditors. You're not reading my text out loud. This is a public meeting, okay? Thank you, I did not request you to interrupt. I told him, I told him I wasn't going to interrupt whenever it was on. I think that's pretty much the, I think that's pretty much everything that I've got right now. Everything you have presented here tonight, we've got in the interim, will be addressed in great detail, presented to the judge, your information is incorrect and missing major key points that matter. This will be programmed.
Okay.
So, like, go on, everybody good?
Both of us, yeah.
Okay. Where were we here? That's D'Anabel link update.
Mike, do you have a link update?
Oh, okay, can you just right there? Okay. I got a couple different documents here, but, okay, I'm just going to read both of them. Two groups took advantage of the town extending the season. The resort closing was scheduled for March 31st, but the season was extended to Sunday, April 11th. I'll go on, explain a little bit more about that, but anyway, there's a little more detail there. The Brian pump failed on Sunday... The Bryant pump failed on Sunday, March 21st, shutting down the compressors, but all groups that ice rented that day were able to skate. However, due to the, um, compressors being down, we had to cancel the March 22nd and 23rd, um, dates for, um, skating. Preparers to the Bryant pump will be, uh, were made and, and, uh, is gonna be covered under warranty. The same folks that we bought the Bryant pump from came up and put the temporary one in to get us back a visit, took the other one back and, uh, told, rebuilt it under warranty. So it's no cost to us.
That didn't last long.
Uh, yeah.
That shutdown, it's only a couple of days.
Yep. Groups that use the arena from March 1st to March 21st. Alex Bay Figure Skating Club, 18 and a half hours. Islander Girls Varsity, nine hours. TI Youth Hockey, 25 and a half hours. Alexandria Skate and Shoe, five hours. Free public skating, seven, three quarter hours. Tiny tots, two hours. A lot of these hours are, seem kind of small, especially like the tiny tots of, um, uh, they would, that's when the, uh, the state was, all these COVID rules make it difficult for, um, uh, parents to come in. So people kind of didn't bring their kids because they couldn't be in the, in, in with them. Watertown Minor Hockey, eight hours. Canton Steel, uh, six hours. Unity Hockey, an hour. St. Lawrence Steel, two and a half hours. Private Rental, six hours. And then, uh, for the breakdown of the extended, when we extended the season, groups that rented ice times from March 24th to April 11th, where Alexandria Central School, four hours. PI Youth Hockey, 47 hours. And a private birthday party, two hours. Uh, the compressors were shut down on Sunday, April 11th at 10:30 a.m. And the ice was removed on Monday, April 12th with the help from Jamie Payton and Jay Gaskin. A loader and a dump truck were provided by the Billis DPW, um, Alex Bay DPW. And by the way, if you're listening, thank you very much. Uh, during this period of time, shelves were built for the over 68 pairs of skates that have been donated over, over the years and they were just stored in boxes. I don't know if you ever went into where they were, it was, it was a mess. If you wanted to find a pair of skates, if, if they weren't tied together, it was kind of tough. So they, they built boxes so you could put all these individual pairs of skates together. So when kids from school or anyone else needing a pair of skates to, to skate, can find a pair that, uh, much easier than they have in the past. Also Alexandria Central School donated new laces for the skates. And I want to send a special thank you to Alan Taylor, who sharpened many of the pairs of skates that we did have. So thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Since the closing of the arena, um, Jerry's cleaned the, uh, the following cemeteries, Brown's Corners, Tanner's Corners, Church Street, and they have started the Point Vivian and cleanup and mowing of other town properties has started. Ely Electric was called to fix one row of ceiling lights that would not come on and the problem, uh, was a faulty breaker and, uh, replaced, uh, placed it, let's fix the problem. I asked the call to, um, give me a breakdown on, on how we did financially this past season, meaning, uh, the revenues that we got and matched against the expenses to operate the ring. We, we know this, this past calendar year, you know, COVID has been very, very difficult. But that being said, it's kind of interesting and I really can't count it 2015 and 16 because, um, we had, uh, a lot of rentals because of the Watertown city ring was closed. So people looking ice, for ice time came up here quite a bit. But I can indicate 2016 to 17, the town had a loss of slightly more than 41,000. 2017, 2018 had a loss of slightly more than 78,000. 2018, 2019 had a loss of about 63 and a half thousand dollars. 2019 to 2020, uh, almost 37,000 dollars a loss. This past year with COVID, we had a loss of almost exactly 38,000. And what's very interesting in that, when you break it down, comparing this past year and the year before, um, in 2019, 20, we had revenues, this is non-COVID, of a slightly under 53,000. This year with COVID, we had over 46,000 dollars worth of revenue. In 2019, we had expenses, uh, payroll expenses of almost 43,000 and other expenses of, of over 46,000. This year with COVID, we had payroll of 38,000 if this compared to 42,000 and our other expenses were 46,000 as opposed to more than 46,000. So we were actually did exceptionally well in an incredibly difficult, uh, circumstances. So I'd like to send a big thank you out to Jerry Duran for doing such a good job.
Mike, I want to say that ring never looked as clean as it looks since Jerry's taking care of it, Jay and Jamie helping him.
Well, this was a very challenging year and I talked to him a lot and he was always worried about us, so look, this is a bad one, just do the best you can.
My church sent a letter, you read it, Brent?
Yeah.
Jerry was so good, he put cones out when they had a hockey game and we had church, nobody could start there and he was friendly and nice and a worker.
He was always there.
Yeah.
Like when I went up to Lexi's practice, he was always there doing something.
But another annual thank you to the Baptist Church for the use of their parking lot.
Oh, yes, we, uh, my pastor and all of us say we got good neighbors, you guys, the towns.
Because I, I don't, most people don't realize the property line is about two feet off that building. So that entire parking lot belongs to the Baptist Church, so thank you very much.
Well, we're right back at you, thank you too.
Okay, we'll go to number 12, status for 12 sewer district easement status. I think Dale Ramels is working on those. He talked to me today and he's gotten to know where we stand, do you know?
I don't know exactly, Jesse, your account.
I don't as a.
I've been meeting with people and we've been modifying different alignments and things like that, isn't it?
Yeah, I have to meet with you too. We have underground.
So that's, that's the process we're in. I'm hoping that in the next 30 days, we can complete that process.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be able to get it done in the next month or two.
I know we were talking about maybe even going out and, and, um, all of us and having to do the notary right there with us.
Correct, the way we've done it before is go meet with property owners on site. I know it's a imposition that Jesse, but really have to have a notary right there to cap, because it's pretty inconvenient to go to a bank.
I think Dale's trying to undo that. I think what he's doing right now is he's, he's kind of screening the people a little bit in advance in case they got questions or in case he has to come back for reports, everything. He'll get a bunch of people lined up and that's going to be, that's going to be. The next one is the DROU, you changed notification on that was, uh, we sent them a letter of what to go after we made the decision.
I'm sorry.
Further on.
Okay.
You have something?
No, go ahead, sorry.
We sent the DROUs, we made that decision at the last, uh, meeting and we sent them a letter and their billing will drop by one EDU, um, in the next billing period. The federal stimulus, American Rescue Act, money projects, infrastructure and roads. Well, we have two different things here. We have the report from Rob Campani of all these proposed projects and we have a report from Mike Tibble of the roads in the town of Alexandria that need to be repaired or rebuilt. We'll start first with Rob Campani and one of the things that I did here is, as I labeled them, I put them in a priority deal. And I'm only gonna go, well, the whole thing is, for instance, water, Redwood Sewer District, water tank repaying, pump station upgrade, meter change outs. Otter Street Water, Route 12 Water. Sewer, Redwood Sewer, sewer plant upgrades, sewer pump replacements, Butterfield Lake expansion. Otter Street Sewer. Transportation culverts replacements, paving, walking paths from the lake to Walton Street. Drainage, Route 37 Culvert, Hollow of Mud Lake. Swan Bay Hollow, Goose Bay Hollow. Recreation, Mud Lake Trail, Vine Castle, existing marina, waterfront. Indian River Lakes, Saint Morse River. Town office building, highway garage, recycling center. So I really only labeled the first three priorities in my eyes. And number one by far is the Route 37 Culvert, Hollow of Mud Lake. We've gone back and forth with the state of New York as far as who's responsible for this thing. We don't have an answer of the state saying we're responsible, we're trying to, we tried to prove to the state that we're not responsible. I think what Rob said is that we, we should just move ahead on this project, get moving on it and then we should try to bring the state in and get the state involved with us. That's probably gonna take us going to some of our elected officials and whatever, wherever we have to go to see if we can get them to help. But this thing is, it's an issue, we've been arguing about it for five years that I know of and it's, you know, somebody could get hurt there. It could be undangerous or it is dangerous. So, uh, I don't know if anybody else got any, I know Mike Fiat, you feel that's our number one?
Well, that's easily the number one. And it's more than five years. I mean, I remember back when Sampe was a supervisor. It was a problem, in fact, I think they had water over the road.
I mean, you and I went to the state office building to talk to the people who are in charge of this.
That I know personally.
And we actually made some headway.
Yep.
But then we got shut off.
Now, I meant to mention earlier today when we were talking about this is, uh, all this money that's from the federal government's has made it into the state, it's trickling down not only to the town of Alexandria, but also the New York State Department of Transportation. And a lot of times, uh, I won't say a lot of times, more times than you realize, um, decisions made by the DOT are based on whether they have funding or not. And it could very well be, you know, before they didn't have the funds, they'd rather spend that money doing other things. Now they might, so we might want to talk to them again about this. They may be a little bit more receptive.
Yep.
I don't know, it's hard to say, but we should do, we need to do something. That's just bad.
Yep. My number two item is Redwood Sewer and the biggest thing that concerns me about Redwood Sewer is it was put in in 1993 and this is, this is 2021. And so we've got sewer pumps, we've got pipes, we've got all kinds of things that are old. We're starting, we have breakdowns. We used to have five or six pumps a year and now we're up to 20 pumps a year and that's climbing. So, and Rob has already done some work on putting together a grant application that we applied for in the past for the sewer district that had a lot of different things in it, the fluorescent lights, the sand, the sand bed, the whole deal. That's what I feel is number two. And number three is water districts and these meter change outs and the structures and infrastructure of the water districts. Anybody else have any opinions or any thoughts? Because Rob, am I correct in assuming that with this money that's becoming available and things that are on the top, that we need to have some things shovel ready?
Well, only my, my experience, we've gone through this a few times before. Most recently was the, uh, ARA funding, I don't know if you remember that? American Reinvestment Recovery Act, which was in 2009 where they pumped a lot of money out in a hurry. And it's usually, um, there, some of the programs are unique, some of them are administered through existing funding agencies, whether it be the federal government, USDA, ESC, all the, all the funding agencies we deal with. But a lot of times they roll things out pretty quickly and, and the ones that are ready to go, develop, cost estimates, environmental clearances, they're the ones that, you know, will move forward quickly. I just went through, Brent asked me to put this list together. I just took half an hour and just started to make a list based on my 30 years or so working here in the town. I'm sure there are other things that I don't know about that, you know, whether it's Jay or Jamie or whomever, uh, Mike certainly, yeah, I don't know what culverts out there need to be replaced or there are the roads that you've just fallen behind on, things like that. But I'm sure to, to collect that data, uh, and even equipment needs, things like that. I think now's the time to really brainstorm on what, what's out there. We, we know of some, obviously, the water and sewer.
I mean, we got $430,000 from the federal government through the recovery act deal and we don't have the money and we don't have any idea when it's coming. And the other thing we don't know is we don't know what we can spend it on. There, I, I heard a report, uh, last week that they're going to set up the guidelines as to what that money can be spent on and they're supposed to be coming out with that, but who knows when? I think Watertown's in the same situation. They've got a bunch of money.
Don't know how to spend it?
Yeah, don't know.
Don't know how we can spend it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
They're just thinking about it.
That's a wait and see deal, you know? But I think there's no question those first three that I've brought up are things that we deal with here all the time. There are things that are, there are infrastructure that are old and they need repairs and they're, and those things are starting to break. The other part of the report was Mike Tible's put together a list of roads.
Well, we, before we get to that, that's why, um, we have, we get together once a week and talk about water and sewer, believe it or not. And today we, we got through the, we're working on, looking at the, uh, Route 12 corridor, water and sewer out that way. And we have the, this new Route 12 sewer district that's becoming, you know, coming towards the bay. And, um, obviously the, the, the build out of that would, would be the next step would capture Otter Street. Okay? Um, and, and we had a long discussion on that because, um, one of the things I brought up when I, when I looked at the plans, and I understand why, uh, there's just a four inch pipe line that comes all the way heading towards Alex Bay until it gets to be around, I think around Beevers, somewhere there or Napa, and then it drops down to a three inch line and then it, uh, it stops at, at the Rockledge Motel. I understand that because it, you know, you need a smaller pipe because there's less flow. But, um, it would seem to me that the, that, uh, when, when Otter Street comes along, it's gonna hook onto the end of this, this district's pipe and go into the new Otter Street Water District, uh, Sewer District, uh, which would kind of would, would require at least a four inch pipe, right?
Possibly.
So it would, I would hope that, um, I mean, it makes it be difficult to make a four inch line work for this district as it currently is set up. But a four inch line, once Otter Street comes along, would be needed. It, you know, there's gonna be provisions to put a four inch line like parallel to that three inch line?
There could be, we've done that before. We did that in Clayton, right? We put a spare line in to accommodate expansions.
Okay.
While the trench was open. So that could be part of it if you're, you know, if you're fairly sure, certain that that Otter Street District would come to the joint sewer plant and not go into the village. So I guess that's a, a question that has to be answered. You have to evaluate pros and cons of going both ways.
I mean, this is my, again, my personal opinion on this. So it would make not a whole lot of, even though it's geographically close, it would make no sense to go into the village. For a couple of different reasons. One of them, they're, they're facing, from I saw a newspaper article yesterday, um, I think it's like $9 million to, uh, to work on their sewer treatment plant. They, that, they have some issues with that. Adding to it would make it any, would make a bad situation even worse. We have a situation out that the sewer treatment plant out next to Price Chopper, it's much, much more modern, a bunch of different cells, it can, it's easily expanded. It would seem to me that that would be the way to go.
And maybe, I.
Since it's a force man, it doesn't really, there's no, it's not gravity, you can make it go whichever way you want, it's just how far.
Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the roads and tell you what Mike has put together. Number six road, 2.6 miles, $360,000 renovation. Pharaoh Road, 2.37 miles, $237 renovation, $237,000. Otter Street, 0.75 mile, $60,000 renovation. Dingwall Point Road, 1.17 miles, $120,000 renovation. Swan Hollow Road, 1.62 miles, $181,000 renovation. Log Hill Road, 1.2 miles, $97,000. Gore Road, 1.69 miles, $58,000. The Zet Road, 1.08 miles, $85,000. Those totals are $1,200,971. The number six road was the first one, 2.6 miles, $360,000. That is the project that Mike has started for this year. And that's, he's been talking about that for a couple of years and what I guess we consider to be the worst road in the town of Alexandria right now. He's got some surface treating, crack sealing on three different roads, uh, number six road, the Pharaoh Road, Alany Road, Taylor Road, they total $74,000. Crack sealing at $12,000, the total is 1.287, 765. Uh, crack sealing at twelve thousand, his total is one point two eight seven, seven six five. Something that we've talked about, that I think we need to look more specifically at is that we talked about funding some monies, uh, some extra monies that we had, the monies that we saved last year when we cut the workforce. And we didn't spend some of the money that we had there. Uh, I think we need to put a plan together, and I'm talking about for this year, of maybe doing a couple of these projects. Uh, besides this number six road. And we'll start working on a, on a list and start, we, we need to see how much money we have that we saved with that workforce reduction last year. Um, anybody else have any input into that? Depending on what goes on with this federal government, I think they're actually talking about it tonight, aren't they? On TV and, uh, they keep talking infrastructure and they keep talking roads, so all of a sudden we got one point two million dollars, here's the, there's a list of roads that are highway super tight, it's suggesting.
Brent, who's responsible for going down this hill on this bump here?
The town.
County road.
The town, that is, my brother said, I'm gonna go up and tell him how we can fix that. He, I said, well, come on, they don't care, but it is bad.
You're talking about this road?
No, no, the, the going right down, Ronnie, you know where I'm talking.
Exactly.
No, no, it's over right here, this down, this is a county road. Okay, it's county.
It's a county road.
That's a county road. That's county.
Yeah, because the town guys go down there and fix that, but you're right.
It's a county road.
They usually shim it with some like crushed stone or whatever.
They put stone in it, yeah.
But I mean, that's ultimately, it's a county road.
So we need to talk to the guy at Collins Landing.
That's true.
That's state.
We need to talk to the guy at, uh, what's his name?
Jim Lawrence.
Lawrence.
Jim Lawrence.
Jim Lawrence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Give me a name and a number, I'll give it to my brother, let him sell it off.
Do you have a? I'll talk to you after the meeting, I'll just talk to you after the meeting because.
What? Okay, yeah, good. I'm not gonna do it, but my brother will.
I have, uh, I have Jim Lawrence's number of contacts, so.
Yeah.
So ask me for that.
Yeah, it shouldn't be our town taking care of it if it's county road.
Whatever work they do, the town reimburses the town. But they, but the town's not gonna pave or do major work on a road that doesn't. We have, we have enough of our own problems than taking care of somebody else.
They pay us to do it, yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, the, uh, so our CHIPS money is up, I think we're about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. Cause the state has increased the, the CHIPS, they've increased the paved New York and they've increased the extreme winter recovery. And I think that's gonna add up to about an extra, another eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for us. Um, and one of the things, I guess I'll have to talk to Nicole about this, but I think do we, we fund, we fund the CHIPS money first?
It's reimbursable program.
To get paid, Mike, you know this program.
It's reimbursable.
It's a reimbursement.
You spend it and you get it back.
So we, we gotta put in a line, uh, we gotta put the CHIPS money. And then Mike will spend the CHIPS money, he submits all the receipts, he spends, submits all the nights and we get re, we get reimbursed.
Correct.
Okay, so is everybody okay with that, that we'll, we'll get a statement from Mike, which I think Nicole already has one of what our CHIPS money is as of right now? We'll allocate the proper monies to, to be reimbursed in the future so that Mike can start these projects, if he wants to start them as soon as possible, okay?
As long as we're, we're, we're very assured on, on what we can expect and fine, go for it.
Okay. Um, I was just gonna say, I'd, I'd almost like to do a, a motion that we would agree to, uh, fund the CHIPS money for now upfront, because I know Mike would like to see that so he can start that work. And we'll ask for the certified, uh, report that Mike has that he gets from the state that says what the CHIPS money is.
Everybody okay with us doing a motion to do that?
Why don't we do it during the budget transfers? I'm sorry? Do we do the budget transfers?
That's what we do.
Is it in there or do it while we? No, we can add it to it.
That's where we do it.
Yep, you're right.
Or how we do it.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, I'll keep going.
Playground.
Playground, Redwood Plus is playgrounds, uh, you guys see a report of some information here I got from a taxpayer that's been looking into playgrounds, that spends a lot of time at these playgrounds or at one of the playgrounds especially. I've been at both of our playgrounds, they're in bad shape. And they, they're.
Some of that four hundred thousand dollars should go to things like that.
And actually I, I see one of these pictures that you all got sent of a new playground deal that I think is, is really nice. I'd like to ask her, I'd like to have this person get some prices on that stuff. Um, because these things are pretty integral parts of our community and important, and I'd like to see us, uh, do something if everybody else is agreeing on it. So, I'll just work with, uh, I'll just work with her and ask her to start digging into it and we'll dig into it and come up with some proposals, uh, by the next meeting as to some improvements that we wanna do. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, that's to both Redwood and Pluses. Uh, it's been brought to my attention that we've got, we had a lot of things going on at Redwood Playground that aren't good and it's going on at night, that we need lights over there. I talked to, uh, our electrical guy and he's gonna give us a price on putting a hundred amp service and some lights over there. He's talking, right now he's talking roughly about three thousand dollars. And that's a dark area that's behind your place standing, is behind Felder's and it's just, it's, it's a lot of, it's, you know, bad stuff that happens over there. And lights would hopefully help that quite a bit. Um, budget transfers. I don't have the dollar amount, Ron, of Mike, as far as the CHIPS money, I don't know exactly the dollar amount.
Right now it's budgeted at one fifty-eight, six point nine.
Mike sent you an email or something like that to had, uh,
Yeah, that's it.
How much he anticipated, right?
And that had the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars figure in there.
Right, that's something, that number that sounded a lot like that.
Well, we'll address that one on, in the end. Unallocated insurance debit, forty-four hundred dollars. Kind of treasury payment, this is general A, kind of treasury payment, credit eighteen hundred dollars. Contingency credit, twenty-six hundred dollars. Cover insurance expense due to increase in premiums. Workers' comp debit, forty-three dollars. Community service CE, credit forty-three dollars. Zoning contractual, debit eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, zoning equipment, credit eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's general B. So the highway DB, unemployment insurance, eight hundred and seventy-two dollar debit. Permanent improvements, personal services, credit eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Redwood Sewer, unemployment insurance, debit one hundred and forty-two dollars. Sewer administration contractual, credit one hundred and forty-two dollars.
You follow this?
These are all the cover expenses within the fund. Unemployment insurance, debit two dollars. Administration contractual, credit two dollars. Unemployment insurance, debit twenty dollars, and Otter Street Water, credit twenty dollars to administration contractual. Route twelve water, unemployment insurance, eleven dollars. Debit, transmission, distribution contractual, credit eleven dollars.
I'd like to add to this, if we're gonna change the CHIPS, I'd like to add right to this. And, uh, I'll write it out, if we, if we decide to do it, I'll write it out for Nicole. Cause right now it's, uh, the account number, it's under Highway DB and it's DB three five zero one, labeled state aid dash CHIPS. And right now for twenty twenty-one, we have it budgeted at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And, uh, nothing has been spent out of that yet. So the question is, what do we wanna increase it to and where do we take out of the budget? I'm not sure if we can, I mean, we're assuming that we're going to have our fund balance, there's gonna be plenty of money in the fund balance. One, one example was the, the cuts in payroll that we did last year because we thought we'd have a twenty-five percent decrease in sales tax. The sales tax actually came in slightly above two thousand and nineteen, which was a shock. So I guess what I'd like to do is add to this list of transfers, but I don't know what kind of number you're talking about.
Yeah.
Nor, normally she only does the transfers once we've used that money and if we've already got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in it.
Well, you use it or you plan on it.
Right.
In other words, once you identify something as something you wanna do, let's take care of it right then and there. Cause what happened sometime in the past, what's happened, things have been discussed and then, and then two months later, three months later, it ends up happening because it was kind of verbally okay and then it never got done. So what we're trying to do is get it in black and white just as soon as we decide that we wanna do it. But I don't know what kind of number you're talking about.
Mike sent, uh, Brent an email that, that, well, uh, goes on, says, uh, I received confirmation that we will be receiving three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty cents plus a possible five percent more in our highway, uh, CHIPS program.
Now that five percent more in the CHIPS program, does that mean CHIPS is gonna spend five percent higher or?
You'd have to ask him, I don't know. I'm just saying that, that number, if you look at her number. He says he has confirmation, so I'm, I'm assuming that.
Where do we, where do we get the money from, fund balance?
Well, that's what, that was gonna be my next question, cause this sounds like two different things. It says, I have received confirmation that we will be receiving three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty cents. I mean, that's a very specific number. Is that part of this federal money that's coming in?
Yes.
Okay, it's not CHIPS money.
Oh, no, it's, he says CHIPS.
Well, no, no, but then it, because then it says plus possible five percent more in our CHIPS highway program. I'm reading that to mean you're getting this lump sum, federal government or whatever, and you're gonna get an extra five percent in the CHIPS program. You gonna give him a call?
Okay, well, I.
Yeah, because it sounds like that three sixty-nine is for the whole town, not just the highway department. For the different structures, items, the playgrounds.
We have something in writing in front of it.
Yeah, so we can understand exactly what that goes to.
But I thought, what was that, what did you say, I thought you said it was four hundred and thirty thousand?
Three things added together, it's that paved New York, it's that other deal.
Yeah.
But the big chunk is the CHIPS. So if he's saying five percent of CHIPS, we're only gonna get five percent of that, one part of that figure, I, I think.
But like, but Sandy's kind of, and now I'm kinda wondering. I thought you were saying that the town's getting like four hundred and thirty thousand, this, this extra money. Which is a different number than this three hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Mike, we're trying to do this allocation and talking about this CHIPS money that you're gonna get reimbursed for, which I think has three items and it does, it has the CHIPS, it has the paved New York and it has the extreme winter recovery.
We have the figure in front of us that, and the rollover, you're right, fifty thousand.
Yeah, um, so how much money do we need to allocate for the CHIPS reimbursement? Yep, we got that figure right here.
Does that include the present year allocation that we've already allocated?
It includes not only the present year allocation, but it includes what we didn't use in the past, which is how much, Mike, sixty?
It's sixty, it's almost seventy thousand, you were in the office when I said that.
Yep, yep, so we gotta rollover from what we didn't use, which is almost seventy thousand.
What is, what is?
Plus this current year's CHIPS. And that all adds up to the.
Seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight this year, that's two twenty-eight. So you're saying this three hundred and sixty is, is in addition to the two twenty-eight?
Yes, it is.
And where, where's it coming from?
It's, it's the paved New York and it's the extreme winter recovery?
And CHIPS.
And CHIPS.
Yeah, if, if you.
Well, they already said CHIPS.
One morning we go on the, on the dot gov site, like I showed you, she knows I did on it.
Yeah.
And, and we go through the figures again.
Right, but you.
Confident that those figures are right.
I was gonna say, you went through and got those figures from that site and actually came up with the three sixty-nine.
Yes.
Yeah, so we just need to cover that three sixty-nine tonight, is what we'd like to do.
I would love to have you cover it, that way we can do the job for the public.
Well, you, the biggest thing about it is you can start it now, that's the thing, you don't have to wait till later, you know?
We've already started.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, we're, we're hopefully gonna do that tonight, okay?
Thank you, Brent.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. That's the total figure, the three sixty-nine and change.
That, okay.
That we need to, that we need to come up with that will be reimbursed.
Okay, my question is this, you talked about, we have one line item here that says CHIPS. So is CHIPS actually a combination of different? And if that is, then we, it ought to reflect it.
CHIPS is just CHIPS, the other side.
Well, I heard paved New York, that sounds like a different program.
It's a different program.
And why isn't it a separate line item?
Mike, is paved, is paved New York part of CHIPS?
No, no, CHIP, no.
I see when we get that form from the state, the, the DOT, it's got those three items and they're labeled separately.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean, you could use them for similar things.
Yes. But Ronnie's got a good point, that's, it should be labeled separately on our financial.
That's true too.
And I just wanna make sure that it isn't somewhere else in here already and that we're doubling it. I mean, under revenue, it doesn't appear to be, I mean, according to what I see right here, there's only two line items for income under Highway DB. And one is, uh, sales tax and the other is state aid CHIPS. So I don't see a paved New York here anywhere.
We, the town of Alexandria is probably lumped them together.
Right, but then under Highway DA revenues, we've got real estate taxes, sales tax, transportation services, Jefferson County, Jefferson County maintenance, interest and earnings, sales cap.
Nicole is front.
Yeah.
At the meeting.
Tell her she's on speakerphone.
The money for the CHIPS program and on our financial statements, we just have, on the, on the revenue side, we just have CHIPS. But we're trying to determine that CHIPS does include paved New York and extreme winter recovery.
Yeah, but not that number.
I don't understand. Where is it? Because the number that Mike cashed for this year includes the rollover, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. It came off the DOT, uh, website.
Right.
But the question is, is there, there's no other place that that money is?
Where, where is paved New York and extreme weather, whatever you call it?
Where's paved New York and extreme winter recovery money?
It's under CHIPS, it, if, if there's no, if it's not on, uh.
It's not broken down.
That's because nothing's been put in there yet.
Yeah.
We didn't know if we were getting it.
So it's under CHIPS, you said.
It sounds like we just have budgeted it at all.
That's just another line underneath that.
Yeah.
What?
Okay.
And it, and it says paved New York and it says extreme weather.
Yeah.
So when we get those numbers, you'll do a budget amendment and we'll propose that.
When we get those numbers, we'll do a budget amendment and put those descriptions in there.
Okay, so then it's not in the budget, right now. Our twenty twenty-one budget did not include that.
Right now it is not in the budget, right.
Okay. And the reason, and the reason we didn't is because we weren't sure we were gonna get it.
Yeah.
And now we're sure we're gonna get it?
Yeah. Now we're sure we're gonna get it, you've been on that website with Mike that says that we have that three sixty-nine coming, right?
Yeah, I, I would want something more concrete than.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you, yeah.
I guess I'm trying to understand how the state, which was crying poverty not very long ago, and now all of a sudden they're gonna fund all these things? That we, weren't we officially told they were gonna withhold a certain percentage last year?
Well, it's two point seven trillion dollar thing that they, they just got done passing. A, a, part of that money goes to all the fifty states and, and it bailed New York State out.
I'm just, I'm getting at, we were told in writing, I believe, to expect a certain percentage to not be funded.
Right.
Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty.
That's where we're like fifteen billion in the rep, now we're not, the Fed's just bailed us out. That's, that's what it's.
So, so I was on a webinar with the Department of Transportation a week ago. And the whole talk in the webinar was how much more money the state of New York was giving out through the CHIPS program to the three different categories. And that was, the webinar went on and on and it wasn't all that positive about a lot of things in the state of New York. That was the one thing that they kept stressing was where the monies were gonna be increasing in the CHIPS and the other two programs, so.
So based on that, we're gonna make a motion tonight?
Yeah.
Well, no, I, I understand.
I don't know that we wanna do this tonight if we don't have a solid figure. And Nicole says she wants to get a, you know, she, she wants to get a verification or something on a piece of paper that says it. Unless we can do it tonight and say it's pending the number.
I mean, well, I think, is he gonna go through a hundred and fifty-eight thousand between? I mean, well, I think, is he going to go through one hundred and fifty-eight thousand between now and next month? Probably not, right?
No.
We, we, we got one hundred and fifty-eight thousand budgeted right now.
He could start it.
And he hasn't spent any of it yet.
Yep.
So if he gets started with the intent, worst case scenario, we don't have it, then he'll have to stop at the one fifty-eight.
So at this point, I'll just ask Mike and Nicole to give us a verification.
In writing.
Of, in writing of what we're going to get and then we'll have no problem doing that.
Right. And he, he already said he's already got started, so we're not holding him up.
No, no, no.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve those transfers as, as stated, which means has nothing to do with what we just talked about.
I mean, the DB motion by Ron, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Motion passed. Highway Superintendent report, that was basically what I already gave. Zoning report, Norris.
Okay. The month of March, I had fourteen permits, making a year-to-date of nineteen, five subdivisions making nine year-to-date. Variance is granted. It was zero for the month of March, leaving a total of five. And variances denied was zero. And it was zero for year-to-date. We had two site plans, making a total of two, especially used permits, zero, zero. Uh, we had, uh, five violation letters making a total of sixteen year-to-date, no court cases. I had one lot line and that's all we had from year-to-date. And the money I turned over to the toll was sixteen hundred and eighty dollars for the month of March.
Okay.
This, uh, just so you know, the month of April will be, I'll be close to twenty-five hundred, twenty-eight hundred dollars I'll be giving to the toll.
So you're busy.
Very busy.
Yep.
These subdivisions are crazy. I mean, the amount of stuff that they're doing.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Norris. Jamie?
All right, so in the water department, I worked seventy-two hours last month. Doing my daily, weekly and monthly duties. I've done four water turn-ons. In the sewer district, I had twelve hours just working with Jay whenever he needed me or weekends, it was my turn to do the weekends. DPW had forty hours. So we boarded up the house on Route twelve. We finished putting together the speed signs for the village. We moved the other two speed signs over, one on Old Island, one on County Route three and buses. We removed the sander and the follow off the one ton, cleaned that up. I've been working with Jay, Gary on the playground, cemetery, chamber building. Helped Gary remove the ice. That was ten hours at the rink. Transfer site, I had two hours just building the stone pad for lease management. Town office, I had two hours repairing the door in the meeting room. And I took three days off, uh, equal twenty-four hours and then I took four, six, uh, hours to get my cool job.
Okay.
Brent, before we go work, I'm going to take Mickey home, but I want to talk to you about the cemeteries. Maybe sometime the workers could paint that sign out at Hudson's there, uh, or the one that Jay and Jamie and them. It's, it's a good sign. It just needs to be painted. You said you've seen it.
Yeah.
And I wanted to know if we're going to sell the lots, because I have had.
Yes, we are.
Nikki had somebody ask her about.
So we're, we're ready to sell lots at Point Vivian. We have the survey map. Jesse has a copy of it that she keeps in the vault. We're ready to sell lots at Point Vivian. We'll probably have people coming in in the next month to do that because I've got three, two or three people that are ready to buy, um, that have been calling all winter and I told them that we have this done by spring.
Okay.
Skip and I are going to the paved White McGivern on Friday for a meeting at one o'clock and I hope it's to finalize the survey map for Highland.
I thought we had it all surveyed. Norris and I went to a surveyor, didn't we, Norris?
We have to lay out the plots.
Oh, okay.
And so we actually have to have the plots surveyed, okay? And that's, which is what we did at Point Vivian. And one of the things that was suggested to us by the New York State guy, uh, that helps this situation is when anybody buys a, a gravesite or a grave plot, that we require that they buy what's called the cornerstones. And the cornerstones are little triangular stones.
Yeah, I know. I own six plots in there.
The corner of the, of the deal.
Yeah.
A lot of times they'll have the initial of the last name of the person.
Yeah, yeah.
And that'll help identify what's what. And we've got this, they all surveyed. They look really nice and.
How much for a lot do we tell people?
We don't, we're not.
Have you agreed on a?
No.
A price?
No.
We ought to get that done.
I, I have to kind of talk to the board about it and I was waiting to find out what the survey costs were going to be. Um, and I do know what, what one of them is. Uh, so that's, that's the next, I think that's really the last thing that we have to do here.
Bobby Gilch charged me a hundred dollars a, a lot and I have six of them there, but it's gone way up. You can't touch a lot in a city for less than a thousand dollars a lot. Big money.
So I had a guy.
Not here.
I had a guy call me today, Jesse, that bought a lot from the town of Alexandria and nineteen oh five. And he's got his receipt for the town. He called. And he paid ten. Or no, it's five.
And how much did he pay?
Ten bucks.
Wow.
Things back then. And he contacted Skip Waller and Skip Waller and him went and met and they went to the lot.
So you do want me to call the state guy to get a meeting going?
What do we need him for?
Well, he might have some money for us. Who knows? They do have an office in Albany for the cemeteries in New York State. Something could have changed or something, but don't you have to have a meeting of the cemeteries once a year?
I don't know.
Town doesn't, do they, Bob?
I couldn't say. I don't know.
See, we were required as lot owners, right?
Where are they surveying that cemetery, Brent?
I'm sorry, what?
Where, where are they surveying that cemetery? The middle road? Because they already did that, right? Yeah.
Yes. When did they do it?
Last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're working on.
Well, there's, there's that whole other, the other end of that.
So the survey is all done as far as it's been marked and it's on a map. We're just placing the, we're just placing the plots inside, inside the survey is what we're doing.
Have you been able to decipher that map that Isma Burns had that Jesse's got it?
No.
No?
No.
That's a nightmare, isn't it, Jesse?
That's why we're having these, these surveys done, because these surveys have got benchmarks in the cemetery, which could be a stone or they could be a tree or they could be whatever. So everything is, is going off that, so we have our, so we have our measurements right. And Skip is extremely fussy as far as what the size of the plots be, because he knows the size of the vaults. And he knows the size of the standard walking room between them and all that stuff. So he's been a vital part of this deal.
Only one vault. There are, there's only one vault and that's centered with people, isn't it?
Yeah, maybe I used to sound like. Casket goes in, casket goes inside a vault.
Cement, uh, pavement.
But there's a name for it.
Yeah, but you mean the, the big monument?
No, 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 the vault, he puts a coffin in it. Yeah, your, the concrete thing goes in the ground.
Cement.
And those are all certain sizes.
Yeah.
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 Well, you answered my question then.
Okay.
How come we're leaving?
Thank you, ladies.
Do you want to say? Oh, year number twenty-six.
Okay, we're here.
You never know.
You want to know about.
Sewer report. Testing as required, filling of beds, village tankers started hauling this week, three loads per week is all that is allowed. Give out approximately ten loads, eighty thousand gallons going. Got a hundred and fifteen hours of that water permit, uh, testing on weekends and when Jamie's off, help with daily duties. As needed repaired hydrant at Town Barn. DPW, Jamie and I boarded up the vacant house on Route twelve. We built and delivered speed signs for the village, took clouds and sanders off the truck. Store helped Jerry with the ice removal at the rink, uh, nine hours. Ordered new mower, should be in next week, ordered new backboards for the Plessis Playground. Sandy and Mike got called over to the Plessis Playground on an emergency call two weeks ago and said they were breaking all of our backboards over there and I think you guys got there and they were already broken and there was nobody there. Is that right?
Well, there were kids there, but it was already broken.
Yeah, there was lots of kids that are playing and they, and they were, they were nice little kids. Um, and the parents kept coming to check.
Throwing rocks at our Plexiglas backboard.
No, the, the backboards had been, I mean, there was nothing on the ground. These have been broke for a long time. They need replacing. They need.
So the new backboards came in and they're going to put them up tomorrow?
Now, didn't that, um, that kid, that, he was an Eagle Scout, um, Texas name. He came to a board meeting a couple of years ago asking for money for, I think it was when Dale was here, for, to do, he wanted to make that a project. At the, no, it wasn't Felicia. It was, um, oh, Jesus, I just told you. They ball head. And, and he, he went to school and he wanted money from the town to, um, replace the backboards. And I think town gave him five hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Um, they must have broke.
Well, we got new ones and they're not Plexiglas. They're composite for it. Hopefully they can't throw rocks through them. And the boys are going to, they're going to stick those up tomorrow, whatever. Helped to clean up the cemeteries and chamber, they did work at the chamber building. They cleaned up the former chamber building and the playgrounds. They've worked on the ball fields. They're going to do a lot of work on the ball fields because they, we got a call and they need the work done and they're going to start using those ball fields. And those guys went up and looked at them and said they need to be rototilled. They need to be yorked. They need a bunch of work, so they're going to, they got that on.
That's in Redwood?
Yeah, Hacksfield.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was DPW forty hours. And one of the purposes of this report is something I've asked these guys to do, which we had a request two meetings ago, was that I'm stating those guys are keeping track of their hours. They're sending them to me every week. And I know how many hours they put in, in the different departments. And as you can see, they're working on quite a few different departments rather than just the sewer and water departments. They're doing a lot of things. They were at Point Vivian the other day for six hours with a wood chipper and picked up everything that was to be picked up and ran it through the chipper and cleaned that cemetery up quite a bit.
Now, Brent, there's DPW, right?
Yes.
I have no problem with them, but why don't we do it for other workers in the town have a list of what they do? I know you're looking at.
Show me.
I opened a can of worms, didn't I, Ronnie? But I, I'm asking that because I think if we do it for one, we should do it for everybody. I'm not trying to pick on them over there.
We kind of had this discussion and this was something that a couple of taxpayers in Redwood asked and, and also Mr. Peterson was part of the deal that wanted to know what these guys are doing and where and when. So we're trying to, you know, provide that information.
They loved it. They did it. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, DPW is part of you, right?
Yes.
The Town Barn is supposed to support the money?
Yes.
That was up. So if it's not getting done, talk to Mike.
Yeah, he isn't here.
So I'm, I'm moving on to, uh, number twenty-three. Where did I actually put that paper? You guys have the IRLC?
Yep.
IRLC support letter. I think I put Dear New York's Great Lake Basin, I emailed this to everybody if they had a chance to look at it, but IRLC, IRLC is applying for a grant and they just need the typical grant support letter from the town. That's pretty basic. And the last side says Alexandria Town Board enthusiastically supports the application and submission of this grant approval. Any more, any questions about it?
No.
Need a motion to accept it? Question, Ron?
Yep.
Your motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Ron, sorry. Second by Sandy. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. For the sewer expansion of Butterfield Lake Camp Road. We've got a couple of letters there. We have a letter from Indian River Lakes Conservancy. And we have a letter from Butterfield Lake Cottage. Butterfield Lake Cottage Association has reviewed the information from the February meeting and has reported a proposed, proposal to investigate the feasibility of extending the town sewer line from Butterfield Road north along Butterfield Camp Road. Thank you for your consideration regarding our participation. It is estimated that approximately forty-five properties would benefit from sewer line extension and it has stalled and it was significantly upgraded with disposal issues along the lake. As presented at the home meeting, it was discussed the potential feasibility extending the town sewer line from Butterfield Road north along the Butterfield Camp Road. Discussion items from the meeting are a number of cottages, potential for hookup, number of permanent residents, number of homes with new septic recently installed, current condition of existing septic. Associations willing, willing to survey owners to identify interest, cottage uses yearly and rentals with extended stays, number of owners with interest in sewer installation, current conditions of existing septic or other issues to investigate. How old sizes, size and pumping function are unknown. Items to, items for town to identify hookup cost, cost per year, service cost per year, if not hooked up, full-time service. Easements, based on disinformation from the town's association, will proceed with a survey regarding all uses regarding destruction and maintenance of the system. Thank you for meeting and information and looking forward. I've had a couple of conference calls and these, I think you were on one of them, right, Ron? And this is something that was, that we're looking into. Would it potentially, if it was that many houses, help the Redwood sewer situation in Redwood?
Well, we already did an estimate of what the capital cost would be to extend down there. That was part of the earlier report. And, uh, an estimated user cost would depend upon how much grant money you can get to help pay for the capital expense. I think the biggest thing is would you have the support to form a district, okay? So is there a majority of the folks down there that would want to, are willing to pay for sewer service? I think that's the pivotal question. Um, because you want some level of competence that, uh, people want it, the majority want it.
So, so do you like, did you survey them?
That's a way you could start by survey. So, and I'll let Bob talk about the district formation process, but you know, you can do it several different ways, including getting a petition signed that, um.
Is that the petition that requires fifty-one percent?
Fifty-one percent of the, of the, of the, uh, property owners and fifty-one percent of the assessed valuation. So it's kind of a two-front test you have to satisfy, if I'm correct in that.
I've never formed a sewer district.
Okay, so he, he can research it, say it's an inconvenience, but in my experience, you can either do it that or you can do it, uh, by order of the town board, you know, if you have sufficient evidence to, to, to substantiate the formation of, of the district. So there are a couple of different ways. The petition is kind of, uh, you know, you have it in writing and it's, it's very clearly have support of fifty-one percent of both the property owners and the assessed value. But a, a lot of districts are formed. But, uh, a lot of districts are formed with, uh, based upon input, a public hearing, of course, is part of the process. Uh, if it's a public hearing, you would, you know, uh, tell them what the estimated user cost could be, what the overall expense, or, you know, you'd get, get that data out there. If you wanna test the waters ahead of time, you know, what a lot of community do is send a simple questionnaire out, a survey, and say, uh, would you be willing to pay six hundred bucks a year for sewer service, right? Whatever the hookup fee is, if anything, uh, you know, that's a simple and inexpensive way to, uh-
Could you send the letter to the, to the, directly to the camp owners?
Uh, sure, typically what you do is, you get all the tax, uh, owner information, and you send a letter right out, yeah.
And it probably wouldn't, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt the fact that you got the two associations that are down there, that a lot of those-
Right.
People are residents, or, or members of. That they, that they're supporting it, and that they'd like to, and they even talk about the survey.
So the survey, and I've got a, a couple of templates of surveys that we could draft, help draft, send out. And then you can make a decision whether you wanna go through the formal petition process, or, or have a, a, do it by order of the town board, which permits a referendum. And then, of course, they could, they could force a referendum, I believe, in that case, where you'd actually have to have a form of vote, but-
So if you had the fifty-one percent, and you had the, the petition, so on and so forth, um, I think the road down there is private. How do you, how do you run the sewer line down there?
Well, you have to get it right away, and if you can't willingly get it right away, then you can, you know, you know, your eminent domain, uh, is certainly a possibility to get, do that, but, I think the first thing is to gauge the the people down there, and see if, if that's something they're truly interested at a cost of, you know, or give them a range, it could be between here and there.
And that's what, that's what they're asking for in this letter, is, you know, they're, they're willing to do a survey, and they've already, by the sounds of it, started, um, talking about it, and they're looking for an estimate of what would it cost to put in-
Sure, to put in their survey, that's even better, yeah.
So, and they're asking for that information, and you said you guys already did a-
That was part of the study we did and finished a few years ago for the overall Redwood sewer district. Uh, we came up, I forget what the capital cost was to do that, say, a couple million bucks, put the pipes and pumps and, and then the, the user cost was part of that calculation, I believe, I'll have to look at the report again, but we could give them a range.
Yeah, if you could give, 'cause that's what they're asking for, is-
And then they could do the survey, that's even better, yeah, because they can go door to door, right? And then present the survey results.
You must, you must, when you, when you did that, you must have had some kind of boundary?
Correct.
That would be good, that would be very important.
You could give them the map that we made our study, our study area included, so I could get that for you.
Yeah, if you could get that for us, then we could give that to them, and then-
Exactly.
They'll, they'll get, 'cause that's something they're very interested in, so if they work it internally, you know, but we, we need to give them that information, that's what they're asking for.
Yeah, that's pretty easy.
On this note, did, did you do anything like that for Outer Street?
Uh, Outer, not on Outer Street Sewer, you mean?
Right.
No, and so if you ever wanna move forward with the Outer Street Sewer, it really should be a district formation report put together, a little estimate of the cost, uh, estimate of user cost on an annual basis. That report has never been put together for Outer Street Sewer.
What would that entail?
Uh, you know, a map planning report, so we have a map, which we could use the Outer Street Water District map as a, as a base map, and then basically do a little preliminary design layout, how the piping and pump stations might be, and do a detailed cost assessment, uh, to come up with an estimated measure.
I just think, you know, it's, it's obvious that that's next, for that part of the town anyways. It would really, you know, nothing's saying that we could, we're gonna happen next year, or even the year after, but, kinda like the Route Twelve Sewer, it took a long time to get to where we are now.
Right.
And so, it would seem to me you should kind of start from that.
That's the starting point, yeah, the simple map plan, yeah.
Okay. And Indian River Lakes Conservancy, Route Twelve, Route Four Hundred Two. The service supports the benefits of public sewer system development throughout Indian River Lakes, reasons protect water quality for all the reasons, but its sewer systems help reduce the risk of pollution and protect the overall quality of groundwater, much of the shoreline in Indian River Lakes have limited soil suitability for septic systems. Indian River Lake Cottage septic systems do not have required septic or house distance from the lake shore. During rainy or wet weather seasons, ground becomes saturated with efficient septic system leaching. Indian River Lakes are experiencing increased lakeside development and occupation of four-season homes, and equated lakeside septic systems may no longer function effectively. Establishment of special sewer districts and our expansion of existing sewer districts will reduce lakeside residents dependence on private septic systems within the service area, which will directly improve water quality throughout the entire Indian River Lakes region. That was from the other organization that's involved down there, so. We'll, uh, we'll start moving forward on, uh, doing the survey, and then we'll get a hold of the Butterfield Lake Association. Uh, I'll talk to the guy in charge down there, actually, quite a bit, and help them a little bit with some of the things they need for their survey. That I'll get from you.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I gotta go back a subject here. Text message, that is, correct? Chris McCormick. Highway Department has been keeping track of their hours every day on their time cards, so we get a time card every pay period for every day. And they put, I believe they have four or five different departments, they work on the roads, they work on machinery repair, they work on brush pit, they work in a bunch of, in those four or five areas. They do fill that in. Nicole has the breakdowns right on there, I wish that would be explained, um, and I know it's been getting done since Chris started over a year ago. The one thing that was different, that we were asked for by the, in relation to our DPW, is they wanted to know the specific work they were doing, uh, more specifically than just machinery repair. They wanted to know the specific jobs, I think you all remember when we were asked that, and that's what I said that I would provide.
And in, in very small increments as well.
Yep. So, but, just to clarify, the highway guys do have departments, and they do it on their time cards, I check their time cards every two weeks, and I see it, they, uh, at all of their departments that they work in, so.
So they tell what they do each day?
They don't, they tell what department they work in each day, if they, if they go out and do maintenance of roads-
Their budget lines, where the various money comes from.
And they have a two or three letter code for each department, MR, maintenance of roads, uh, paving, different one, different things that they do, the brush pit, the couple guys that down the brush pit every week, especially this time of year, when it's getting filled up every couple days, so.
Well, like John said, I oughta ask Mike, well, he, he doesn't come to a meeting, you can't ask him anything. You can't go in the barn and ask him anything, so how do you, what do you do?
If you, if you submit the questions to me, or whatever, I'll, I mean, I can email him, or, or text him, or whatever you need.
I'm not gonna put you in between, Brent, you've got enough on your mind.
Twenty-five union negotiations, Ronnie and Sandy, uh, I think you've reported to us where are we at, or?
Ongoing would be the best way to say it.
Ongoing?
Without getting into details, and I don't think that's really something we should be getting into, I don't, maybe-
I agree, I think it's more-
With executive committee, yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, cannabis, opt-in or opt-out? And that decision has to be made by December thirty-first. And the basic, one basic rule that I have learned here, is you can opt-in at any time. If you opt-out, if we opt-out, you can opt-back in at any time later in the future. If you opt-back, if you opt-in, you can't opt-out.
What is?
What do you opt out of?
After, after the deadline.
What do you opt in, you know?
Oh, okay.
Well, there's, there's some-
I'm sorry, two things.
There's a, there's a revenue, a potential revenue stream-
Three percent.
That you, like, the state gets, what, thirteen percent, and then, then it breaks down for poop, and then the town would end up with-
Three percent accounting is one.
Right. And there's that. I don't know, there's, what's the other thing?
Well, I think there's two, one is dispensary, and the other is, I don't know what the word for it is, but, there's, there's two things, I think, that, one is a dispensary, okaying that, and the other is basically, it's not called a bar, but be a place to partake, so to speak.
And the one I mostly focused on was a revenue stream. If you, if you're not participating, obviously you can't access that money.
My understanding, the county gets one percent, and the municipality gets three.
Cause, I know the state, it's like thirteen, and then it's chopped up from there.
Right. Yeah.
I don't know how they give it to-
Is that something that could be put on the November ballot?
I, I thought the same thing. I don't know, you can only put it on the ballot if the state law says you can, so, I never looked at the state law.
It just seems like it'd be nice to see what the, what the, how the residents wanna, wanna do.
Yeah, I, I would say the same thing, the five of us, why, I don't think that's fair. You, you can do that, the question is, can we have a referendum, you know, if it's the election, if you have local leaders, office chair, or whatever, doing these things. I, I don't know, I have to read the state statute, I haven't read it.
Just, I mean, there'll be, in November, I mean, as far as, i- i- if you're gonna make a decision, it's nice to have that based on a large amount of participation, and the November ballot time will be the largest amount of participation.
Fake book?
Understood, yeah. We, we did it for the, uh, for the first thing, the ring, we did it for Bonnie Castle Rec Center, yeah.
That's what Bonnie, yeah.
Why, why couldn't we?
Well, by law, well, as Bonnie, Bonnie says, we may be able to, but, uh, check it out.
I have the statute on my desk, I need to look.
I got a response I gotta tell you. You can come to the town barn anytime and knock on the door, and Mike's phone number is on the door, you can call.
You can go in.
Take your ear in trouble.
Okay.
Mike's gonna call your door.
Thank you, thank you.
We should come to my door. About noon time, my son's there.
See you later. Happy, happy birthday.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everybody.
So-
Bye-bye, bye-bye. Keep up the good work, you guys, I'm still on your side.
So, uh, just something I wanted to put, bug everybody here, you gotta start thinking about, is opt-in or opt-out, yeah?
Yeah, I'm just-
This is opt-in or opt-out of what now, exactly?
Whether we wanna have the sale here within our town.
Allow sales.
Do we wanna allow sales here within our town?
I believe it's twofold, though.
It's not say, whether I'm making smoke, right?
One is a dispensary, where you can go in and buy, and the other is a, I don't know what the term for it is, I think it's two separate things. So you, you could, the town could allow, like, the equivalent of a bar, where you could go in and partake, and then they could also either say yes or no to dispensaries, which would actually, where the sales would take place.
So it's, it will be legal to smoke marijuana in this town?
Okay, only where you can smoke.
So, so the problem, I would say, is what are the communities, surrounding communities doing? I mean, if, if we can't sell it here, but they can sell it there, as you say, we lose revenue. Well, I know that, I saw Channel Seven last week- I mean, if they can smoke anyways, why are we there? The Village of Laubel was opting in, and the Town of Laubel was opting out.
Right.
So you could do that, I mean, it's just- I'm just saying, my point is, if you're looking for three percent revenue, which I, it kinda sucks, but, all I'm saying is, if you can smoke it anyways, if we don't get the revenue, they'll just go next door and get it.
Right. The sale's gonna take place, it's a matter of how partied it is.
It's not like they're gonna stop it.
No.
It's not true, you're going to the other. As far as smoking, the same rules apply for cigarette smoking would apply there.
Well, but in New York State, you can't smoke inside, like in a bar or wherever else, so this is gonna, apparently-
No, you can't, no, you can't, that's, that's-
Well, how, 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 then-
You can smoke in your own house.
My understanding is, that there's gonna be places, public places, where you'll be able to go, and, and, like a bar, always.
I don't know about that, I think the same, smoking, smoking is still smoking.
Well, if that's the case, then there'd only be one thing to opt-in or out, and that's dispensaries.
Yeah, I'd say that, that, I, that's what I-
I think we need a lot, there, between, we've got six months to figure it out, so, taxpayers, please talk to people that you know, and let us know what you're thinking, and how you're feeling, but, there's a lot of, there's a lot of research that needs to go into it, 'cause at this point, I have no id, I have no idea what I would think, or which way I would vote, 'cause it really doesn't affect me, so.
Okay. Moving on, workplace, and I have some training, I think, uh, we've got everybody, there's just a few more people left to do it, and it's been going smoothly, and if people log on, and it takes about an hour to do it, and, uh, we should be able to finish that up by the end of the next month.
Do, do you know who hasn't done it?
Me.
You do?
Yep.
And they've been, they've been notified?
Yep.
Okay.
It's me.
Yeah, there's, I mean-
Thank you, I'm glad I'm not the only one. I am, I am the procrastinator.
You guys aren't, you guys aren't the only ones, so, and you've got, you've got another month to do it, so. Change meeting date to the third Wednesday of every month at six PM.
I know, I know we need to next month, for sure, because we've got grievances on the fourth Wednesday, so we can't, so, we definitely have to next month.
When you told me about it, Sandy, I thought it was a good idea, because Nicole continually worries about the fourth meeting for these bills, because they don't go out till later.
Those are paying.
For instance, this month is the, this is the twenty-eighth, those bills may not get processed, the check's written, and the check's signed, and go in the mail till Monday. And that's after first of the month, and some of those things are thirty days old, yes, we don't pay late fees, but, we still get letters from everybody, from not everybody, we still get letters, and we still get phone calls.
Yep.
Where's your money? So this will move us back to the third Wednesday, which will help her situation, which is why I reacted in a positive way as soon as we talked about moving it back.
So why do we move it where it is now in the first place?
Huh?
Was there a reason in the first place?
Yeah, I asked, because I-
Not you, all right?
I asked, because I was on the executive board at the Legion, but I've been voted off, so, I said, we might as well go back and make it easy for Nicole. So our subject.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about that. So, I guess we need a motion to do that.
I got the, I'll make the motion, you move the meeting.
And second, for?
I'll second it.
I, I'm, I'm sure we're done.
Any further discussion on it? All those in favor signify by saying yes, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
So that will be advertised, just so you know, 'cause we need to advertise that to change it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll put it on the website.
Okay.
That's just on the website now, it says four o'clock.
Yeah, so we'll change it.
Okay. Bookkeeper's computer, uh, she's been having problems on there, and when she comes in in the morning and she logs on to QuickBooks, it takes, sometimes it takes her ten to fifteen minutes for QuickBooks to come up, and she talked to the IT people about it in the last day or so, and they went in and looked at her computer, and they told her it's getting tired. So, she's extremely nervous about getting, she's extremely nervous about it getting tired, because she's got a lot of very valuable information on there. I did ver, I did verify, three months ago, that that stuff is getting backed up on a daily basis, because we had that question here.
Where, where is it backed up?
With ABE Systems.
Okay.
Okay, I did verify that, just to make sure.
Not, not being backed up on her computer?
So, she's got a, she's got a fresh room, uh, ABE. One thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Anybody got the budget in front of them? I don't.
That's low. Let's, let's do it. That's a, that's a no-brainer.
Well, this is, that's a pretty important thing, that I'd say that we need to do. And that would be-
Budget man's looking right now.
Well, didn't she say she'd take it out of her salary? Gee, she's listening.
Thank you, Nicole.
Uh, we're not allowed to take, well, I guess we are allowed to take gifts. Is she under A, or where?
Under A, I believe.
Excuse me? A, A?
A.
Something a little equipment or...
Nothing else, sir.
Oh, yeah, it's bad.
Deputy supervisor, ten thousand dollars.
clerk to supervisor, okay, that's personal supervisor. C E, oh, we got three grand.
Okay.
Under, yeah.
Okay, so I need a motion?
On page three of the P and L, but, P and L, but...
I'm ready to hear it from the bookkeeper.
Motion by John. Second.
I'll second it.
Second by Sandy. Any further discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, none?
Which one did you call it?
Just, Brent, when you mentioned that, let's see here, Daru, the EDU change for the Daru property, you mentioned that it was, it was being lowered by one EDU, it's actually being lowered by a half of an EDU to one EDU. That's what this thing said anyway.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not going down one EDU, it's one...
What says that?
No, no, it was point seven five, point seven...
The letter that went to them?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't ha, I didn't, I was looking for that.
Right, that's...
So, that's a correction, just...
I'm doing, what do you want?
It went down by one EDU, it went down by a half?
I'm just, I just, I was worried if they were listening.
One to half, so it went down by a half, two one.
I don't know, I'm gonna transfer to this, uh, computer.
Uh, it's under C E, it's actual, I wonder if that's even...
Okay, that's right, all right, okay, that's going, that'll, that'll...
Thanks, Ron.
I'll get ahold of you.
That'll be right.
We probably want to get that staked out, because where the stakes are, is where all my life goes.
Sandy, you know what today is?
Only a life goes right there.
You appreciate this.
That is.
September twenty, April twenty eighth, nineteen seventy-five.
So I, I guess we don't have any executive session?
Forty-six years ago!
Attorney says we don't have anybody else having executive session.
But we're gonna talk about, um, Teamsters.
About what?
Teamsters.
Sure.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna want to know what we, because they, they came to us last, and we need to talk to everybody.
I think we all know what you guys talk, you talk about, so it's gonna probably be short, so...
I make a motion to go into executive session regarding the negotiation.
Okay, second?